Good morning, I am Trenice Riggs, School Board Chair. And the time is 9:00 AM. Today is day one of the School Board Summer Retreat. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board Retreat through live streaming on schoolboard.vb schools dot com slash meeting meetings slash live broadcast on VBTV Channel forty-seven and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, would you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab are Vice Chair Riggs, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callan, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Owens.
Thank you. There's several members not here today. Our Vice Chair has a death in the family. She's out of town. Ms. Manning has family in town and she won't be here. Mr. Culpepper is working and could not get his schedule to work for this. And Ms. Melnick is, will be here later this morning. So she had a medical situation. Okay, so we're gonna go over the agenda. Welcome all of the staff members. Thank you for all of your work that you've been doing. We all appreciate it sitting up here. Thank you very much. So we will, the welcome and review is like fifteen minutes. It's not gonna take that long. So from nine fifteen to ten fifteen, we're gonna go over the compass to twenty twenty-five update. And Ms. Lisa Banakie, our Dr. Lisa Banakie, our Executive Director of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability, will be providing that for us. From ten fifteen to ten forty-five, the school calendar development process. Mr. Delaney, our Chief Schools Officer, and Natalie Allen, our Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, will be presenting that. From ten forty-five to eleven, there'll be a break. Eleven to twelve thirty, we, Dr. Robertson, our Chief of Staff, will be addressing the teacher time dilemma. And at twelve thirty to one thirty, we will have lunch. From one thirty PM to two fifteen PM, the budget development process and priorities will be presented by Dr. Spence, our Superintendent. And two fifteen to three thirty, assessments, purposes, types, the type of assessments that the school system gives and why we give them. So Dr. Robertson, our Chief of Staff, and Dr. Banakie, our Executive Director of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability, will present, be presenting that. From three to three forty-five, there'll be closing thoughts, remarks from Dr. Spence and Trenice Riggs, the School Board Chair. Okay, let's begin. Dr. Spence, do you have anything to say first?
No ma'am, you adequately covered that and we can jump right in with Dr. Banakie.
Okay, welcome.
Well, good morning, Chairwoman Riggs, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I'm here to provide you with an update on the division's work related to our strategic framework, Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five. In this update, I'd like to revisit, oh, I'm supposed to click for myself, sorry. I told Regina I would, but I didn't tell her I'd forget. But I did. Okay, in this update, I'd like to revisit the priorities we set for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, share pertinent recent survey results with you, and share the focus for the upcoming school year as outlined in our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Strategic Action Agenda. And while it may be hard to believe, it's also time to start discussions about the development of the next strategic framework. Whenever I discuss the strategic framework, I like to start with our strategy map. I think it's important to see the big picture of what we value and what we're working toward as a school division. It's also a reminder that the outcomes represented in the map are for every student. And you know that behind this strategy map is a framework composed of six goals and more than forty strategies. Many of you have heard me say before that one of the biggest challenges in strategy execution is not so much knowing what to do as it is knowing when and how much to do, which is why on an annual basis, we developed the Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five Strategic Action Agenda where we identify key priorities for schools for the upcoming school year so that the work is laid out in a clear and manageable way. With the completion of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, we're now more than halfway through the current strategic framework, Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five. I share this visual as a reminder that the intent of the annual Strategic Action Agenda is to keep us on track towards our goals outlined in Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five. As you may recall, we previously identified three big areas of focus for the Strategic Action Agenda, and they're listed on this slide. We did this based on the belief that taking a more thematic approach to organizing the work would help people see the connections between the actions taken and the goals they support. These three areas have continued to be our focus for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, and as you may recall, we added an emphasis on supporting staff and celebrating success because we viewed it as foundational for achieving the work outlined in the Strategic Action Agenda. For the first part of this presentation, I plan to highlight key actions taken to support each of these focus areas and share relevant survey data gathered as part of our spring survey of students, parents, and staff. As a reminder, the data gathered as part of our annual spring survey helps to inform our key indicators for monitoring Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five, which we refer to as navigational markers, as well as our program evaluation and monitoring efforts. New this year were a few items gathered for our equity work and our continued focus on the science of hope. As I shared at the mid-year update, one way that we worked to support staff and celebrate success was by focusing on the science of hope with administrators as part of their citywide meetings. Throughout the year, we focused on helping people understand that at the heart of hope is focusing on goals, identifying pathways to achieve those goals, and building agency for accomplishing identified goals. We also looked for multiple ways to engage employee groups to provide them with opportunities for input into the operations of the school division. Through this process, pain points related to staffing and compensation, student behavior and scheduling were identified and addressed through the collaborative work of multiple As part of our annual spring survey of staff, we asked them to indicate the extent to which they were satisfied with their job in VBCPS and the extent to which the professional learning opportunities they were provided were appropriate to meet the needs of their job. The results you see on this slide are for school-based staff only. Agreement percentages exceeded eighty percent, and there were slight improvements over the previous year. We consider the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year to be a bit of an anomaly because of the pandemic. As part of the spring survey, we also asked school-based staff how satisfied they were with communication efforts of central support departments and assistance received. There was a slight improvement with respect to communication efforts, but perceptions of assistance provided by central support staff remain the same, and agreement percentages for both items were below eighty percent. This will be an area of continued focus for central support departments. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, we plan to continue to leverage hope as a strategy to create conditions for students and staff to thrive both now and in the future. There is research to suggest that students that have more hope do better in school, have more developed social and emotional skills, and foster stronger connections with their peers. This is why the Office of Research and Evaluation examined the literature related to hope and identified survey items for students that address key concepts related to goals, pathways, and agency in an educational setting. The data will be informative for the work of schools in implementing strategies to continue to foster hope among students. We will also continue to provide professional learning and resources to support this focus Now for our next area, there's not a lot, whole lot for me to share because you've received regular updates related to advancing educational equity in our school division. As a quick recap, during the mid-year update on Compass, I shared the management and planning approach. It's implemented once the Equity Plan was approved by the School Board. In May, Mr. Harris, the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, provided highlights to date and next steps for the high-leveraged strategies outlined in the Equity Plan. Just last month, Mr. Harris also shared information related to a partnership we're engaging in with Hanover Research to assist with deeper action planning and the development of the Equity Data Dashboard, along with other tools and resources to assist us in our work. Our goal is to have the Equity Data Dashboard available in the fall of this school year, but in the meantime, we did gather some perception data as part of our spring survey that will be reported in the dashboard and wanted to share it with you now. A couple of reminders, the strategies in the Equity Plan are organized by goal areas in Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five, and that the data I'm sharing are only the perception items. There are other data elements that will be included in the Equity Data Dashboard this The questions on the spring survey were asked of students in grades four through twelve unless otherwise noted. The responses by the three largest racial, ethnic categories, as well as by special education status and English language learner status are reflected on the slide. As you can see, large percentages of students agree that their teachers use instructional materials that incorporate multiple perspectives and reflect multiple cultural backgrounds, ethnicities, and identities with very little variability among the various groups. Lower percentages of students indicated that they have a chance to provide input about school-related issues and experiences, but again, there was little variability among the groups. We've never reported results by disability status and language learner status, and were pleased to see how high those percentages were. There were several perception items, these next several perception items are ones that we also report on our Compass navigational markers and address school climate issues. As you can see, large percentages of students agree that their school provided them a safe and orderly place to learn and was a welcoming place to learn with little variability among the various groups. Somewhat lower percentages of students indicated that they felt valued and included in their school. Ideally, we would want to see at least eighty percent of students expressing agreement to this statement. The next perception item is also one of our navigational markers and measures students' sense of belonging at their school, and with the exception of English language learners, the agreement percentages were below eighty percent with a six percentage point difference between black and white students. The next perception item also had quite a bit of variability and was below our desired threshold of at least eighty percent agreement, and it addressed whether students felt that they were treated fairly by staff with respect to how discipline was handled in their school. As you can see, black students had the lowest level of agreement with this item. The final item in this goal area measures students' self-reported participation in extracurricular activities, clubs, or athletics. With the exception of English language learners, more than fifty percent of each student group reported participation in these types of activities. The spring survey also included items that address reported goal-setting, academic and career planning, and access to courses that support students' future plans after high school. More than eighty-three percent of the various student groups agreed that they set goals for their learning and future plans and that they have access to courses they need. Lower percentages of students agreed that they receive assistance, resources, and information to help them make informed decisions about options after high school, but there was little variability among the groups for that item. We also had a few perception items for parents that were included on the spring survey related to communication received from their child's school, satisfaction with opportunities to be involved in their child's school, as well as awareness of and satisfaction with events, programs, or resources the division provides to help them support their child's education. The results were reported for all parents as well as by the three largest demographic groups. These demographics were self-reported, and as you can see, eighty-five percent or more of parents agreed that their child's school effectively communicated important information to families, that they were satisfied with the opportunities available to be involved in their child's school with little variability among the groups. Seventy-seven percent of all parents indicated that they were aware of events, programs, and resources provided by the division to support their child's education, which was a four percentage point increase over the prior year, and agreement percentages showed little variability among the groups. Of parents reporting that they participated in division-sponsored events or programs, eighty-eight percent or more expressed satisfaction with little variability among the groups. The final perception item identified for the Equity Dashboard asks school-based staff to indicate their level of agreement with the item on the slide that assesses the extent to which they think their school has the necessary resources to support students' needs. Overall, eighty-five percent of respondents agreed with this item, with the highest agreement level from black staff members. The Office of Research and Evaluation is working on a methodology to define high and low-need schools and report these results by that dimension as well. Our next steps for next year include working with schools to review their data and identify and address trends. In keeping with the action steps outlined in the Equity Plan, we will also be providing schools with professional learning on inclusive teaching practices and inclusive classroom discussions. As mentioned previously, we'll also be building out the Equity Data Dashboard in partnership with Hanover Research. Our next area focus for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year was integrated systems of support, which you know involves addressing students' academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs with progressively more intense instruction and interventions through the Student Response Team Process, Section 504, and Special Education Committee. But foundational to supporting students is providing high-quality Tier One instruction, that is, instruction provided to all students every day in our classrooms. And throughout the year, we continue to leverage literacy and math coaches to work closely with teachers to strengthen instruction. Members from the Office of Student Support Services also attended Principal League meetings to demonstrate the use of a data decision-making tool and Unified Insights, a data analytics platform, to examine school-level discipline data. The Office of Student Support Services also provided professional learning for aspiring and new administrators in the former Roundtable Series that included topics of student behavior, SRT, PBIS, and students with disabilities. Two of the trainings provided by the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children to Assistant Principals addressed integrated systems of support as well. During the course of the year, the Division's Social Emotional Implementation Team developed a continuum of SEL skills to provide developmentally responsive skills that align with the VBCPS SEL framework. These skills are organized by developmental band as well as by SEL competency. These guides articulate the SEL skills that teachers and school leaders can foster in their classrooms and schools to provide students opportunities to develop, practice, and reflect on developmentally appropriate skills that help them thrive in school and life. These guides were shared with principals at the league meetings and will be used in professional learning over the course of the summer. And also this past spring, the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation provided central office staff with training on creating a sense of belonging and integrating SEL practices into the classroom to further build capacity of central support staff to use the data to inform decision-making when providing support to school-based staff. This slide displays results for the spring administration of the five VBCPS SEL competencies for the last three years. This is also a navigational marker. Again, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one was the year most impacted by the pandemic, followed by little fluctuation from this spring to last spring, with percentages staying the same or improving slightly, with the exception of the competency of social awareness, though the percentage agreement was still very high at ninety percent. The area of self-management continues to be the area with the lowest agreement percentages. Moving forward for next year, we'll continue to strengthen Tier One instruction in all content areas with an emphasis on evidence-based literacy and numeracy practices. To support the work of tiered interventions, we're planning a field test of the multi-tiered Systems of Support, MTSS, module within our existing student information system to better track and monitor the interventions that students are receiving. There are also new data reports being made available from this date that provide information on the amount of growth students are showing on the SOL assessments. The reports are based on value-added regression modeling and can provide predictive information for students' expected performance on upcoming SOL assessments. In addition, like many divisions across the nation, we've observed an uptick in the percentage of students who are chronically absent and are working to ensure that schools have the support they need to implement and monitor strategies for addressing student attendance. Just last month, I attended a roundtable hosted by the Educational Advisory Board in Washington DC that had student attendance as an area of focus. It was identified as a challenge by superintendents across the nation, and EAB staff shared research and resources to address this area. Additional next steps in the area of integrated systems of support include helping schools leverage coordinated behavioral and mental health support programs and resources. You'll hear more about that work tomorrow during Mr. Jameson's presentation. One of the pain points identified by teachers this year through a variety of input opportunities was student behavior. Again, tomorrow, you will hear more about the student behavior and our response to it during Mr. Delaney's presentation. But what I want to stress is that our approach is about maximizing the tools available in our toolbox to address behavior. Next year, we'll continue to help schools embed SEL into their daily practice and use SEL data to inform decision-making by providing continued professional learning on how to access and use the SEL data in decision-making related to Tier One and Tier Two supports, as well as modeling SEL best practices in meetings, professional learning, and feedback. The final focus area on last year's Strategic Action Agenda was creating future-ready students, which we define as students exhibiting the attributes outlined in our graduate profile. I shared that this work stretches across the full K to twelve continuum at the mid-year update. Throughout the year, we have placed a heavy emphasis on identifying what we refer to as works of substance, evidence of learning that is substantive, rigorous, relevant, and real-world. We also continue to expand signature experiences for high school students specifically through service learning, and tomorrow you'll hear more about this work as part of the presentation that Dr. Lockett and Mr. Arnold will provide on scheduling opportunities and future-ready As part of the spring survey, high school students were asked to respond to several survey items aligned to our work of creating future-ready learners. As indicated in the charts on this slide, over the past three years, at least eighty percent of high school students agreed that their school provided them with rigorous learning experiences, though there was a slight downward trend over time for this item. There was an upward trend in the percentage of students agreeing that their school provided them with learning experiences relevant to their future goals, and evidence to suggest that there has been some improvements in the area of providing students with real-world learning experiences. There was a small decline in the percentage of students reporting that they were learning and doing things matched to their needs and interests, but an upward trend in the percentage of students agreeing that VBCPS has prepared them for what they plan to do after high school. For the last two years, more than three-quarters of high school students agreed that they were provided with opportunities to apply learning outside of school. And finally, over the past three years, a large percentage of twelfth-grade students agreed or strongly agreed that they have a plan and know what they're doing after graduation. Large percentages of parents of twelfth graders agreed or strongly agreed to this item as For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, we'll continue to focus on engaging students in deeper learning, and by this we mean learning that uses student-centered practices as well as relevant, authentic, and real-world problems to foster student agency and provide them with opportunities to create and apply new knowledge across contexts, as well as demonstrate what they know and can do. We'll also continue to strengthen the academic and career planning process to increase students' understanding of the options available to them throughout their K to twelve career, as well as after graduation. We've also identified increasing access to and success in advanced coursework as part of the Equity Plan, and will work with elementary and middle schools to ensure students are properly identified and supported as they progress through the system. As Mr. Harris shared as part of his update in May, all high schools will implement equal-opportunity schools. This program provides strategies and a data analysis portal that allows schools to locate, encourage, and support often overlooked students who could benefit from advanced coursework. High schools will also continue to provide students with opportunities to demonstrate that they're future-ready. I shared next steps as I went along, but now I'd like to put it all together and refer you to the copy of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Strategic Action Agenda that you have in your agenda materials, and it looks like this, maybe after this presentation. One of the things that I think is important to point out about the Strategic Action Agenda is that the actions listed are co-created and shared priorities. I'm using the word "co-created" because they were developed with input from senior leadership, central office directors, and principal representatives that serve on Compass Collaborative. I also want to stress that these are shared priorities, and by this I mean that while they reflect the expectations for schools in the upcoming year, they also represent a commitment on the part of central office to provide support and resources to address the priorities. When you look at the Strategic Action Agenda, I hope you will see that it recognizes our evergreen challenges, those challenges that are universally and continually relevant. Our pathways for addressing these evergreen challenges continue to be leveraging hope, advancing educational equity, using integrated systems of support, and creating future-ready students. And I'm actually modeling the science of hope right now by sharing our goals, the challenges we want to address, and the pathways we will use to achieve these goals. The only missing piece is agency, but the next several slides will lay out how we plan to support schools and foster their agency for engaging in this work. So first, we have a resource site on our Internet that is updated regularly to include curated resources for schools organized by these different focus areas. It includes a variety of strategy stockpiles, guiding documents, and information to support schools. The Summer Leadership Conference is designed to build capacity to implement the Strategic Action Agenda and help building leaders identify school-specific strategies for furthering the work. This year's theme is "Hope in Action: Empowering Leaders to Create Positive Change," and that's a logo that was created by a student, has a really nice meaning behind it, but I'll keep moving. In addition, there's a variety of professional learning being offered to school leaders over the summer. The Office of Professional Growth and Innovation is offering summer sessions focused on building leadership capacity through the development of people and organization skills with content aligned to the Strategic Action Agenda. The sessions cover a variety of topics and provide leaders with an opportunity to engage in interactive, intentional learning, networking, and collaborating with peers. The Office of Student Assessment will be offering professional learning on Virginia's visualization and analytics solution, the new data tool I referenced earlier with the value-added modeling. PGI will also be providing optional professional learning sessions on the science of hope for all staff. The Summer Leadership Conference kicks off the learning for administrators aligned to the Strategic Action Agenda, and we reinforce that focus throughout the year with ongoing professional learning and resource sharing at citywide and league meetings. In addition to support and resources for administrators, a variety of touchpoints have also been developed for teachers to engage them in these priorities. At the May meetings of the Superintendent's Teacher Advisory Group and the final meeting of the Teacher Assembly, teacher representatives engaged in a protocol referred to as "back briefing," where they reviewed the Strategic Action Agenda for the upcoming year and identified their contribution to the work, as well as factors that could affect success, as well as actions to get the work off to a good start. The information gathered from the teachers was shared back with the strategy leads to inform their planning for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Earlier this spring, the Offices of PGI and EI announced an opportunity for teachers to apply and serve as design fellows focused on cultural competency. The design fellows met for the first time in June and will continue their work throughout the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. These teacher leaders will be working independently and collaboratively to identify and define the required knowledge, skills, and dispositions of teachers who effectively and explicitly integrate culturally responsive strategies across content areas and grade levels. In addition, this summer, the Department of Teaching and Learning is hosting a conference event on August seventh at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. It's open to all administrators and instructional staff and represents a wonderful opportunity to school staff to share the great work they're doing to support creating future-ready learners. There are also a number of essential professional learning sessions that will be offered that support improving student behavior and are listed on this slide. Before I move on to discussing the planning for the next strategic framework, I'd like to pause and entertain any questions or reflections you may be having in response to what you've heard to this point in the presentation.
Good morning, Dr. Banakie. Thank you for the presentation. I have two questions. One was, I might have missed this, what was the percentage of student participation in the survey? Do you remember?
Yeah, I have that, because that would be a question I knew I'd get. Student participation in the spring survey was seventy-eight percent.
Seventy-eight, okay. And then, just out of curiosity as well, I don't see, in many of the slides, or any of the slides, I'd have to look through all of them, but the Asian students were not put into a specific subcategory? Were their responses put in with a different group? Were they put in with just all students?
Let me see. Let me look back. They're not, they're in the all students, and when they're on the Equity Dashboard, they'll be listed as a separate group, but because of the size of the slides, we chose the top three.
Right, okay. I'm just curious if they were, if they were included into, like, a different subgroup? Just with the, because there was another one where it was just the top three as well?
No, they were not included, they just were not reflected in the chart. But we can get you that information. But we can get you that information if you'd like that information, but again, on the Equity Dashboard, they'll be listed separately.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Okay. So I'm looking here at Slide 15, under Goal Three, Student Ownership of Learning. It says, on average, and I'm just going to go with the "all" students, just so that I can save time, but seventy-nine percent of students are reporting, they receive assistance, resources, and information at the school that help them make informed decisions about their options after they graduate high school. And then if we go to Slide 16, Goal Five, we're seeing a similar number for the parent response about being aware of the resources to support the education and time after high school. And I know that in the future, the next steps, it was indicated that we're going to ensure all students and staff are invested in the academic and career planning process. Is there any specific way that you have outlined to increase the awareness for parents and students about what is really available for them? Because one in four seems like a pretty large gap to me for students that really feel like they understand what's available to them.
I agree.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Brown. Good morning. Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair is not here. School Board Member is Dr. Spence to answer your question. Mr. Jameson is not here with us this morning. He'll certainly be here tomorrow and can speak more specifically to it. Part of those next steps are to engage very closely with our families, as well as our students, in terms of academic and career planning, and not just at the high school level, but certainly at the middle school level and at the elementary level in terms of making students aware of what's possible, not only in our school district, but certainly throughout their entire K-12 career, and certainly what's possible after they leave Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So part of that process is making sure that we address those questions and concerns with our families early on and certainly with our students. So for example, our school-based counselors push into classrooms, and more often than not, is generally in a class that all grade levels take. So for example, on English classes, to talk to students about courses that are available to them with an emphasis on the advanced-level courses and encouraging those students to take advanced-level courses that they've not already thought about doing so. So as part of Mr. Jameson's presentation tomorrow, I'll ask him to speak a little more specifically to that.
Great, thank you. And then I have one other question. So the Science of Hope was mentioned a lot. Is that a guiding document that the Division has available for us to view?
Well, it's a, one of the things we did last year was we all read the same book. All administrators were given the book, The Science of Hope. We're more than happy to provide you a copy of that book, but I won't be hurt if you're like, I don't want to read the book, can you give me the short story? We'll find you a summary of it as well.
I'll look up the book. You can just skip.
People have varying levels of interest in reading.
I will read the book. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So. Thank you. First question, I know that this information has been provided before, so it's just for a reminder for me, the definition of chronically absent, how many absences does that mean? So we had an uptick.
It's a percentage, it's based on the percentage, isn't it ten percent?
Ten percent.
Ten percent, if a student misses more than ten, ten percent or more, ten percent or more, more than ten percent, then they're considered chronically absent. So obviously, that's based on the number of days you're in the system.
Okay, and so that's based on total days, not like you missed twenty percent of first block because you're late all the time. Are those students considered chronically absent from that class or from school or not at all?
It's a full-day absence that's recorded. And the other piece, as you were asking, that is, it is relevant to the amount of days you're in attendance. So if a student's enrolled for the entire year, you're looking at one hundred and eighty days, you're saying, once they hit that eighteen absences mark, nineteen puts them in that chronic absenteeism rate. But you could have a student that comes that, you know, only attends one hundred and thirty days of the year, is enrolled one hundred and thirty days, and you're taking ten percent of that number.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes, that's very helpful, thank you. And then my next question was, the survey data, seventy-eight percent of students participated, I thought that's a pretty good percentage. Is that high school students only, do middle school?
That was for, that was for the full survey. I don't know, they have the individual for the ones that were just asked of high schools, we can get that information for you.
But like, the survey is given, is it given to middle school students?
Yeah, grades four through twelve.
Four through twelve.
Yeah. But those questions in particular were ones we'd identified when we put in our innovation grant, and we had questions we're going to be reporting out on, so we had the high school students respond to that.
Right. And then the last one, it could be for later, but I am interested in the Hope in Action logo, finding out about the student who created it and kind of that meaning behind it, since clearly somebody put a lot of work into it. And just curious, when those opportunities come up, because it sounds like an opportunity for kind of a professional development opportunity within the school learning setting, is that put out to students in a certain class saying, hey, we're looking for logos? Or is this, how does that opportunity come about?
I'm pretty certain that we reach out to students in a certain course at the Advanced Technology Center, and then students put in, and there are multiple, and in fact, we go through a process of voting on logos, and it'll be easy enough here before the, even within the next hour, to send you, send whoever's interested the brief description, because it's in the front of our program. Can I go back to you for just a second? Real quick. I thought, because initially, initially, when we're voting on logos, it wasn't at the top until you read the description. And so the person who designed it first was like, oh, that's interesting, the people and the letters, but if you notice, it goes from orange to blue because it's starting with sharing the light from H to E, and E is still in the blue because hope is yet to be passed to that color. Anyway, it was pretty deep, and we were pretty, really impressed and excited to use it as a logo, like it on a shirt, anyway.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you, thank you for the explanation.
Anybody else?
Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you know how much Science of Hope is being layered throughout, say, different state agencies? I know Veterans Affairs did some work with it back in 2019, TCC and Virginia Tech have done a little bit. Is this something that is coming from VDOE? Do we know if TCC is also sort of carrying this across as students enter their system?
I think, and Dr. Spence can speak to this, but I think it was something that was on the hearts and minds of superintendents as we were coming out or believing we were coming out of the pandemic. I think there were opportunities at the national level where they had presentations and information about the Science of Hope, and it really resonated, I think. But Dr. Spence, do you want to say more about that?
Well, I mean, specific to your question, it was not, this didn't come down from DOE. I'm not sure it was a, it's a state-level discussion. To the point, I was at a national meeting and had an opportunity to learn from some folks who are kind of deeply engaged in this conversation around hope and not hope as a, you know, fluffy thing, but hope as an actual peer-reviewed science that has remarkable academic research behind it in terms of its impact on student performance and student graduation and other measures that we care about. And it just was a powerful enough conversation that I felt I needed to bring it back here to talk to our team about. And so we've kind of been running with it since then.
Yeah, I like the action and forward-thinking piece of it. I do have the book. It would be wonderful if we could find out, and I can do this myself, I guess, and see what other agencies in education are also embracing this, so our students can see that this is a layered process even once they leave our school system. You know, this is being embraced at tech, at TCC, Veterans Affairs, military, whatever that might be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I think that's it.
But I'm not done yet.
Okay, yeah.
Don't get excited, we're not done yet. We're almost done, okay.
You don't have to go that fast, you can slow down.
All right. I thought I was doing a pretty good job. Okay, okay.
Yeah, you're doing fine.
All right. Thank you for your questions and reflections. At this point, I'd like to shift to discussing planning for the next strategic framework. All right. So if you are thinking, it can't possibly be time to start the planning process for the next strategic framework, I would have to politely tell you that you are wrong. School Board Regulation 7-21.7 requires that we activate the ad hoc strategic plan committee one year prior to the end of the cycle of the plan, and this is where it gets interesting because it becomes a matter of playing on two fields, continuing toward the vision outlined in Compass to 2025, while at the same time beginning the process of engaging a variety of stakeholders to hear their vision for our school division and then crafting that vision into a framework. I've already begun some key legwork for the planning process, including convening key strategy leads with responsibility for items encompassed to 2025, to assess accomplishments to date and work to be accomplished over the next two years as we finish out the current strategic framework. As a next step, I am proposing a working session with the Planning and Performance Monitoring Committee to review the process that we've used in the past to create the framework for the purpose of gathering feedback to inform the process. One of my personal core values is continuous improvement with the behavioral imperative of make it better, because I believe there's always room for improvement. To help explain why this process is starting now and not 2024, I've laid out a tentative timeline of key events in the planning process, using the last cycle as an example. The idea is that the work of the fall is to create an agreed-upon process for developing the framework and begin to gather community input. Then midway through the year, convene the ad hoc strategic planning committee with the intent of drafting goals for the July 2024 retreat of the school board in preparation for sharing a draft of the full framework by fall of 2024, for adoption by late fall to be ready to implement the new plan in July of 2025, and I'm already in 2025. My colleagues know this. As you, as has been our custom, at this point in the planning process, I'd like to take a few minutes for you to think about and respond to the prompt listed on the slide. Regina has a little note capture tool for you, and people out here do as well. I expect you to participate. I don't know that you have any yet. Can you get to here? Okay. So take just a few moments and think about the prompt you see. The next strategic planning process should dot-dot-dot, and jot down your thoughts on what's coming around. I like to gather those back after we're done. I'll also open it up here in a minute for anyone who wants to share out loud. I am. They'll be graded. Well, I think everyone, from what I can tell, given you enough time, is I don't want to close it off as anyone want to share something out loud. I'll still collect them at the end. Anyone want to get in the queue and comment or question? You don't have to.
Okay. Just coming from a different perspective on the economic development side, I think in the next process, having folks from the Planning District Commission, or at least looking at the comprehensive economic development strategies for the city, the SEDs, because that's a pretty forward-looking document that can help inform us on what the workforce needs might be, what the economic development plans might be, to really see if we can mesh what the region needs to do with education and workforce with what we're doing.
Ms. Franklin, and then Ms. Owens.
All right. Well, I have kind of three thoughts. Be inclusive of comments, thoughts from parents, students, and BBCPS employees. Consider where we currently are in regards to our national and international competitiveness, where we need or want to be in the future to keep our graduates competitive, you know, and also, you know, provide the framework for what needs to happen to get there. And then take lessons learned from this current strategic framework and find remedies for what has, where we have had challenges and continue the great work of what has been successful.
Ms. Owens.
I actually combined what Ms. Franklin and Ms. Martin said, but also making sure that what we put in our framework is going to be rooted in evidence-based research and data as we're getting the input from community and businesses, et cetera.
Ms. Anderson.
So I would like to see, like, almost immediately, us getting input, starting now, starting as soon as you can get it together, an open communication where teachers, parents, even students can access an online product where they could write their opinions or suggestions about what we would like to do or what they'd like to see us do in the future. I mean, I just think as soon as we can start getting input, the better. And I see Natalie shaking her head about she's got something up her sleeve, so. Yeah, I think the sooner we get input, the better, so that we can then begin putting those suggestions forward. And I like the suggestions about the workforce development. I think that's very important, that we need to gather information about that. I'm not saying that we need to do a survey where we give them ideas, although you could say, you know, here are some suggestions that we've heard in the past. However, if you have other suggestions about the direction you'd like to see this next strategic action plan go, you know, what are suggestions? I mean, I know it sounds weird to ask for an open dialogue like that where they could just write in their suggestions, because, but I feel like that would really give them an opportunity to say, I suggested this particular area, and, you know, I'd like to see it explored further, that type of thing, where they, where we don't really prompt them, but, you know, we want, we want them to give us ideas, and even the students, as we know, they think outside the box a lot better than we do sometimes. So I just feel like, you know, we need to have an open dialogue where they can actually type out their reason, what direction they'd like us to go. So I don't know if that can be done. I'm sure Technology Department can come up with a way to do that, but I'd like to see that. So that we can't, people can't come back later on and say, you know, you gave me a survey, but you directed that survey and only gave me these suggestions, and, you know, we want, I want to hear their open dialogue.
Each of the last two strategic planning processes, and I understand, you know, there's a five years between each one of them, but each one starts with what is really an open funnel of. Ten years ago, the two questions we asked on a virtual town hall was, what are the skills and abilities students need to be successful in the future?
skills and abilities students need to be successful in the future so the community could tell us? And the second follow-up question was, what does Virginia BCD Public Schools need to do to make that a reality? This most recent cycle, we kind of started a little place different. Instead of saying, what are the skills and abilities, we put out our graduate profile and said, this is what we've identified. Did we miss anything? And what do we need to do to make this a reality? So there's always, we feel the same way. The survey that comes eventually, if we, now granted, I want to, I'd like to come to the PPMC and have this conversation, but the survey comes much later and is then based on inputs that have been received, but there's still room for comments there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kellum? Ms. Brown, okay.
So I echo the sentiments of Ms. Anderson. Sometimes as a parent, when the surveys come, the option that I would want is not available, so then you don't take the survey. So I do think that if we have another box at the very minimum so that people can put that in there, and then also, you know, I would also like to have the opportunity to view that feedback so that we can ensure we're encompassing everything. In talking to some folks that are on state boards here locally that are, you know, on the boards for the state, our college enrollment numbers are down significantly, and so I would like to see us collaborate, you know, maybe with the state, maybe even get information from some other states to see what they're doing. And I don't know how we would correspond with that. I'm happy to draw on your expertise for that. I'm sure you guys have some ideas, but I think that that could be really valuable in ensuring that the students that we prepare are prepared, not just for Virginia or Virginia Beach, but to move anywhere in the country or outside of the country. So I just want to make sure that we're preparing them for what the future actually holds.
That was another topic that was discussed at the EAB Roundtable. There was a special session on something that EAB is offering their members because EAB works with K to 12 institutions, but just as much they work with higher ed, and higher ed is really suffering nationally, suffering enrollment issues as a, as a multiple reasons why. And so working on, we're starting to see solutions where it's like, it's the college that's coming after the student and making the offers. Like, there's a lot of motivation on the part of higher ed to really go after students and how do we, like, leverage that for the benefit of our students? So it is something we're discussing and, yeah, so thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mrs. Riggs? Mrs. Weems is on my, is there a reason why, does she have a question? Is she online?
No.
Okay.
No.
It's me.
Okay. Sorry. That's all right. I didn't want to miss anybody.
No, the people that are not here are not online either.
And then my last slide was just opening up for any questions you might have about the planning process, but kind of moved into that. And to thank you for your time and for your support of the work of the division. And I want to gather the little circles, and I have time to do that, so I'm coming around, but I'll ship them up if you want to ship them up. They're not graded.
So I'm going to take delivery while Lisa's collecting those, just to mention a couple things to the board members that have been around for a while. You know that the work that we do on strategic planning is sought after by school divisions around the country who want to learn about the process that we use. And quite frankly, our process has continued to get better because of the feedback from the board. I mean, the two suggestions we got here about making sure we have somebody from Economically Develop engage with stakeholders. I had mentioned to Lisa, I think we need to have some local officials or even some possibly state delegates from a policy perspective. I love the suggestion by Ms. Anderson. We do have a platform that we already have in existence called Let's Talk that can absolutely do that very thing, and it can frame the question or questions in an open-ended format that we can leave open for the next several months to help guide our work. So those just are two examples of the type of feedback you've provided to us in the past that has provided us the opportunity for continuous improvement in our strategic planning process. So look forward to the work to come and also a reminder that, you know, throughout the year, you'll get updates from Dr. Baniki and others about work related to the strategic framework. I will tell you, in consideration to something that occurred recently, there are no changes to the strategic framework that require any board action. So if there were, we would be presenting it as requiring board action, but there are not any requirements at this point. And then I'll offer one more point to Ms. Owens's question about chronic absenteeism. Just my hypothesis and speaking with some colleagues around the country, I think part of the attendance problem is for two years, we told parents and students, if you have a sniffle, stay home. We also have a learning management system that allows that student to be at home and learn. And so I think those two factors have led to a higher absenteeism rate. And unfortunately, that's costing us a little bit in Virginia Beach right now and other divisions around the country, so we'll continue to work on that. But those are two things that I'm, I'm pretty certain are impacting the daily attendance numbers, so.
Dr. Robertson, I can add, we're noticing in the truancy court on the docket that we're seeing almost a 30% increase in the amount of truancy cases that we're filing this year, and the courts weren't prepared for that this year, so we're working through that. We are trying very hard to get it. We only go to court when we cannot work it out through the administrative processes, but again, we're seeing a large number.
Thank you for those added comments, Dr. Robertson and Cammy. And thank you, Dr. Baniki. Okay, our, next on our agenda is the school calendar development process, and Mr. Delaney and Natalie Allen will be taking over that.
Mr. Delaney's passing out the current year calendars for you. All right, so good morning, Board Chair Riggs, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. We come to you today to go over the calendar development process, as a refresher to those of you who've been on the board for a while, and as likely new information for some of our newer board members. In November, December of the school year, Team Dossel and DCCE worked together to create multiple draft calendars that meet the school division's educational needs. As a reminder, we are back to doing two years' worth of school calendars. During the pandemic, we were doing one at a time, but it's been requested from the board that we move back to a two-year cycle, which we're happy to do. So when we meet to create these draft calendars, these are many of the items listed on the slide that must be taken into consideration when a school year calendar is created. In addition, changes that seem small may not actually be small once we take into consideration required seat hours, transportation, lengths of breaks, and other things like that. Then we bring these draft calendars to the Calendar Work Group to narrow down, ask questions, give suggestions, and tweak. So just kind of to give you a little bit of information, we draft multiple calendars that are just, you know, from our expertise, but then the Calendar Work Group really works together and tweaks things. If they don't like a day here, we move it there and those kinds of things because obviously they have different perspectives and help us see things that maybe we didn't see initially. So together, we tweak the calendars until everyone agrees on multiple drafts that we can then put out to Teacher Assembly and to the VBCPS community via survey. In January, we asked Teacher Assembly to give feedback on the calendar drafts and to rate their preference. Also in January, we put out the calendar survey to all staff and families. Surveying the community was new this past cycle, and it was something we would like to continue this year. The purpose of the survey is to understand the preferences of our school community. Information from the survey, along with input from the Calendar Work Group and our Teacher Assembly, will help inform the school board's decision regarding the adoption of the calendar. And last but not least, we bring these survey results and other feedback from Teacher Assembly and the Calendar Work Group to you, our board, for discussion in early February with the hope of an adoption of the calendars in late February. As you all know, we've had some questions from the community about why we're getting out of school at the same time, even though we're starting school a few days earlier. By starting earlier, we're able to provide staff with badly needed staff days during the school year for them to use for planning and meeting with parents. We also added in a holiday, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. These were things requested by both teachers and families and were approved by the Calendar Work Group. As a reminder, that work group is made up of staff from Dossel, HR, and DCCE, as well as school administrators, teachers, parents, community groups, and even a student or two. We have had some board members ask why other school divisions in the area are able to get out earlier in the summer after implementing a pre-Labor Day start, and this is a pretty simple question with a more complicated answer, as you can imagine. Most school divisions in the area have more minutes in their day, meaning they're, they have an easier time meeting the state's seat hours requirement. We would struggle to meet that requirement at the high school level if we got out earlier in June. We then get asked about adding minutes to our own school days, and then it comes down to a transportation issue. Adding time to the high school day while maintaining the same schedule for all other schools would require additional buses, school bus drivers, and support staff. For example, 15 minutes would equate to approximately 85 buses and bus drivers, one area supervisor, and two fleet technicians. Shifting the elementary and middle school schedules to 15 minutes later as well would add time to the workday of all school bus drivers, equating to approximately 15 FTE allocations. And this schedule would be similar to the current schedule with middle schools dismissing at 4:20 PM. Middle school late dismissal like that impacts sports and other after-school program transportation such as AADA extended day as it currently does. Hybrid options all fall into the same parameters. Efficiently transporting students to and from school requires a two-hour and five-minute window between high school and middle school dismissal in the afternoon. Compressing that time increases the number of buses and bus drivers exponentially. There's also the question about changing dates on reserve at the convention center for graduations. We currently have dates held for 2024 and 2025. As you can imagine, we have to do that very far in advance, so changing those things would add complication as well. And lastly, we want to remind you that the board and Dr. Spence asked us to make holidays and religious observances available to the public on our website, both on our calendar page and on our rotating calendar on the homepage. They have also asked that we ensure our schools are reminded to consider this list of observances when planning tests as well of events and, as well as events and programs that encourage student and family participation. So that goes out in a memo each beginning of school year. So in the winter, we'll be convening a Calendar Work Group to review and approve the draft school year '24, '25, and '25, '26 calendars, and plan to move forward with two pre-Labor Day start options for the community to vote on at this time. And like I shared earlier, it has been requested by the board that we go back to the two calendar years at a time cycle, but we wanted your input, given this is our first year moving to a pre-Labor Day start, so just something for you all to consider. And at this time, we'll take any questions or feedback you may have about this process.
Ms. Anderson.
Okay. First of all, I want to see what the, I want to see what the impact is on these four days. How many, how many absentees we're going to have on those first four days that we're going back this year? I think we need to consider that. That needs to be a high priority. So let's see what happens in those first four days and the amount of absenteeism that we're, that we know we, we always have some in the beginning of the year anyway. Let's see if we're impacted more on that.
And I do, just to kind of clarify to you, as a reminder, we have those beginning days, but as required by the law, we have a four-day break for Labor Day. So just wanted to let folks know who might not know that already.
And I've been asked multiple, by multiple teachers, you know, why are we starting, you know, they're saying a week early, it's four days early, and still getting out. And so I've said, you know, we surveyed teachers, and teachers actually requested to have several planning days embedded within our calendar, and that's the reason why that we're still getting out at the same time. But I really, really would like to ask somebody, whosever job that is, for, to look at adding five minutes here or there, because I do feel that it might impact us in how many, how many seat hours that we can begin accumulating. I just think we need to take a hard look at that, and I realize that it impacts transportation drastically. I realize that, but I just think we, we've got to think outside the box a little bit. I personally like the fact that we've embedded instructional, our planning times within the school year. I love the fact that we now have the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. I think a lot of teachers will appreciate that this coming year as well. And of course, I'm speaking a lot for teachers, but, you know, I think about parents too. It's, it's important. A lot of people plan to go out of town for Thanksgiving, and it's a big, huge travel weekend, so they like to get out of town either first thing Wednesday morning or the last thing of the evening on, you know, on Tuesday afternoon before Thanksgiving. I think that's really important, that we, we remember that. Because we are, we are a military area, and a lot of military people like to do that, and I was impacted that way as a, as a teacher myself, as a military person, well, family. So, yeah, traveling on Tuesday evening was, you know, and usually I would take a personal day on Wednesday if I had to be able to do that. So that's important.
To your point, really quickly too, as you will probably recall, we had multiple options that some of them started even earlier. So we started with four days, but we talked about the possibility of moving that back a little bit. And one of the requests was for the winter holiday to have more time as well for our military families who might have to travel longer distances to see families. So that was, of course, a consideration of ours.
It is, it is a huge factor, especially at Christmas time. That's the other time that military, they actually have two way, two, what is it, schedules for military families. A lot of military men take the first, you know, week or so, and then some of them choose to take the second week or two. So that, they're impacted that way as well, so.
Ms. Anderson, if I can just, for the new members of the board, I'd just like to talk through a couple of things on the calendar, as she referenced what teachers and others were asking for, that I want to highlight on this calendar so you see those dates. Because it was, we went through a pretty exhaustive process, as you recall. We went back a couple of times to get this approved, and if you take a look, for example, at October 9th, that Monday, 9th, is just a staff day. We typically do not have, have not had that as a staff day, but teachers were asking for that time period in October 9th for an area to work on things like four-by-four grades on a high school level, but others to level set to a degree after the start of the school year. If you then look at November 3rd and November 6th, the 3rd is the end of the first quarter for our middle schools, elementary schools, and our AB students. And then you have on the 6th, which was advocated for by the Board of Flex Day. So you're looking at essentially two days for teachers there to close out the first quarter, prepare for the second quarter. We did that last year, but we typically have not done that from a calendar standpoint. We've talked about the November 22nd. You look at January 29th and 30th, again, the close of the first term, first semester, two days embedded there for teachers to close out the semester and prepare for Term Two. You heard that a lot from my, our high school folks with the change of schedules that were going on at that time. You then take a look at March the 5th. Again, that is another staff day that's embedded in that does not always exist during that time that teachers were requesting, that long spring run that goes from early February typically to spring break. Teachers and staff were asking, can we get a break in that period for our students and for our staff? So you look at those pieces, then you look at April 15th as well, where you look again as that is another staff day that's embedded in. So I share those with you, that that are, those are the reasons for why we have four days at the front end and why it takes us to get to mid-June typical graduation time. Those are the instances that were put in place based on the feedback of our teachers and staff and others around that need to better perform and do their job performance. So I wanted to be real clear with those pieces because Ms. Anderson makes a good point. If you, we expect an uptick in concerns about the pre-Labor Day start to happen in the next month or two, as we've tried to continually remind folks, this is coming, this is, you need to be prepared for it. But these are the things we need assistance on in communicating back to them that you advocated for these days throughout the year, and that's why the calendar is as it is. And it was a very exhaustive and extensive process, as you recall. and that's why the calendar is as it is. And it was a very exhaustive and extensive process, as you recall. So for the new board members, I just wanted to outline that piece so you're aware of why those decisions were made or where they exist in the calendar. Thank you.
I just have one more thing that I'd like to, uh, uh, discuss just a little bit. It has to do with, um, the, um, the days that we, that we have at the convention center for graduation. Honestly, let's not use that as an excuse at all, because honestly, think about it. We could have students actually finishing out the school year on the, the tenth or whatever, I'm just pulling a date out of my head, but, but it doesn't really matter. Their graduation date is set, and they could be finished, and we could have graduation ceremonies, you know, a week and a half later. That, that has nothing to do really with our calendar. Um, and I know that, that it has to do with seniors finishing up, but seniors could be finished up, you know, on Monday or Tuesday, and then they don't graduate till Saturday. That doesn't really matter. As long, as long as we have those dates set, they're fine. They can get their, their, uh, graduation, uh, uh, invitations put out with the date on them, um, but that really doesn't impact our calendar a whole lot. I don't.
And we, we will look at options that allow for that to happen, and then it becomes the question of what do we want to sacrifice in terms of other areas in the calendar? Do we want to start earlier to allow for those staff days? Do we want to remove those staff days? Do we want to compress some things? Do we want to take away those holidays? So you, you've been around long enough to know that there's pain points here in any decision we make around a hundred and eighty-one days. And we're, we're never going to have complete satisfaction on the calendar across the board. So, you know, we appreciate the input there, and we certainly will look at it for the twenty twenty-six graduation. Right now, that first week in June is open, but as, uh, Ms. Allen said earlier, it closes fast. So, um, those are things we'll look at as we develop the calendar.
Okay.
I, I think what, and I, I just want to add this, I know I'm not in the speaker's list, but I just want to add this part. What people are not seeing and understanding, because they keep saying, well, other schools get out. And, and what you said at the beginning with our buses and our schedules, people still don't understand the mammoth job that we have to do with buses. Because, and because of all of our programs that we have provided and the transportation for these programs.
Yes.
They, they're not seeing that whole picture, and I guess somehow we've got to get that communication out even more. I mean, maybe forefront, bolded, whatever, something needs to be said, because we're still getting, as you, you guys all know, please look at this calendar, we know you're talking, talking about it. We don't like starting before Labor Day if we're not gonna get out in a week early. They can't, they don't get it. And I, I just don't know what else to say to help with that.
Well, and we've talked about, and this is just one avenue, um, we've talked about in our newsletter, like we did previously when you initially voted on the calendar, having more of that extensive information in August, you know, coming up to the school year, so that folks remember or are reminded about that. So here are the reasons why we're doing a pre-Labor Day start, here's exactly what it does for us. And we can add that piece about, you know, we have gotten these questions and almost do like an FAQ. We've gotten these questions throughout the year, and here's the reason why. We have, to your point, just such robust programming and transportation along with that programming, that it really does complicate things in a way that's probably not the same for other school divisions.
Thank you.
Right, Ms. Franklin.
I agree. Actually, I'm just gonna piggyback on what, um, Chair Brink said, uh, because I think that this post-Labor Day start is going to be very telling about how successful we are with that decision we've made with that calendar change. Um, but I, I'm, I'm glad that Dr. Spence is back in the room, because we actually had just briefly mentioned in the past about how we look at our seat hours differently than other divisions. I think that has to be really clarified, and along with a simplification of an explanation of why we are so different when it comes to busing, and, you know, so I don't know if that goes hand in hand, but the, I think that there is a lot of confusion about why we can't do thing, you know, our calendar like Chesapeake or Norfolk or Port. You know, so I think that we, we really need to clarify and simplify to them, we have the academies, the size of our division and the seat hours. If we, I think that just a very clear, concise, um, statement would be helpful.
And I appreciate your comment about the pre-Labor Day start, and we're gonna evaluate it heavily. The only thing I would caution against is to pass complete judgment three weeks after we've started the year.
Right.
Much as we learn with Canvas and much as we learn with the high school scheduling model.
I thought you were worried that we'll, we'll.
We should, yeah, because we'll get more information on teachers saying, thank you for the staff day, thank you for the early Thanksgiving and so forth and so on. So I just, I just give that breadth of caution, that we're all gonna feel the pain with the early start. I mean, I think that's going to happen, but we're gonna be prepared to do it, and we're working with our principals to ensure that opening is very meaningful for our students when they come back and leverage those four days prior to Labor Day to really form great relationships, go over expectations and, uh, really welcome our kids back to school. So it'll be an interesting time to look at how that operates, and I think it's all of ours responsibility to really, uh, elevate the work we do in Virginia Beach with our academies' programs. The Chesapeake does not have, Norfolk does not have, the other school divisions around us don't, don't have that fortune and, and sometimes.
The size, and I think that that, that is something that, that I want to just make sure that we, we are clear and concise about, is just the size, the scope of what we do in our division. And then, uh, Dr. Spence, could you just clarify, cause you had mentioned in, uh, one of the past meetings about how Virginia Beach looks at seat hours differently, um, than other divisions. Could you just again describe and clarify that?
Well, I think that the biggest issue is some places count the time between courses, the travel time between classes as seat hours. We don't count that time, so that does change the amount of time that we have to build into our schedule to get the nine-hundred hours of seat time in for our high school students. And that's one of our challenges.
So is that something that is not clear from BDOE or?
Well, it's, I wouldn't say it's unclear, but what I would say is tomorrow, when you get, and I know, Ms. Martin, you've asked about this with scheduling opportunities around our CTE and work-based learning. You'll get additional clarification tomorrow and a presentation on how we're trying to address that seat hour dilemma. And so you'll see some of that in Aaron Arnold's presentation tomorrow.
Okay, thank.
Ms. Martin.
Um, that, um, passing time or transition time was one of my questions, but one thing I want us all to be aware of is twenty states have reduced their fourteen and fifteen-year-old labor restrictions. No longer need a, a work permit, uh, you can work more hours. Um, so being in the tourism industry, certainly the, the Labor Day, pre-Labor Day start is concerned, but I see quite a few long weekends, which is encouraging in terms of off-season travel. But I want us to really think about our start times as well. I know that's a whole nother can of worms. Um, however, um, it does concern me if we do see, uh, these labor regulations changing for our fourteen and fifteen-year-olds, having this seven-ten start time. You know, it really does concern me in the long term.
Yeah, you gave me a little bit of a flashback there, Ms. Martin, but I'll get over it.
I know.
But I think there's also some, again, when we look at those scheduling opportunities for students and how we look across the state on who might be able to provide flexibility with our online programming, it's something we're certainly exploring.
Yeah.
Uh, to, to leverage some of the great opportunities that are out there for kids to do exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens.
So I also had a question about the transition, so hopefully we'll hear more about that tomorrow. Uh, it was mentioned that adding a additional fifteen minutes on the high school day would, uh, extend the bus driver day and basically be equivalent to fifteen additional FTE positions. Could we have additional information about what that financial impact would look like on our budget? Um, is it even a, a possibility to hire fifteen more FTEs and, and bus stuff? Just so that we are making an informed decision about why we are not going that, um, in that direction?
Sure, we can definitely work with transportation to get you those numbers.
Okay, and then my other question was about the, uh, uh, staff day in March, which I'm, I'm happy that they are having something to break up.
Yes, March is always the.
Long run, but is there a, a, a reason, I guess, calendar reason, why it was chosen to happen on the Tuesday rather than the Monday? I know, just from a family perspective, having a day off, like coming to school on Monday, be off on Tuesday and back on Wednesday can be additionally cumbersome rather than an extended weekend.
We'll look into it. I, I honestly, I don't know, but if you wanna.
It may be the four-by-four calendar, but let me go back and look at that. That might be the end of the quarter on the four-by-four for high school. But let, let, let us go look and see what rationale for that Tuesday was.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question.
Ms. Braylon.
So I appreciate, um, your presentation and the discussion on the fiscal impacts of even five minutes of the day. And I, um, I do believe that we need to, you know, work within our existing budgetary setup for that. Um, however, I will also indicate that when I do my school visits, this is the one thing that the staff and the teachers are coming up to me about is this calendar. And so some of the things that were mentioned were that some of our staff work jobs down at the oceanfront, and it doesn't give them the opportunity to fulfill those, um, upper, um, extra income opportunities. And, um, they also feel like they're coming back, like you said, four days sooner, but that they aren't getting paid extra for those four days. And so they feel like they're committed to the four days, but they aren't receiving compensation for those four days. So I, I just wanted to, um, advocate for them on that.
Ms. Brown, if I can just, they're getting paid for those days. They get paid on a hundred and, a hundred and ninety-day.
Okay, so, so then that's a, um, a miscommunication on their part, then, okay. All right, well, thank you for clearing that up. I'll make sure that I, you know, tell them that when, um, that comes up.
If I can just answer the other part, I'm sorry, just when I continually reinforcing the teachers to really focus when they have the opportunity and provide that feedback, because we had significant amount to do that. The example I get, will give you is they used to, last, last year, they had about eight days of professional start-the-year time because of needing to get the amount of days in within the calendar, and what did we hear back? It was way too much time that they were preparing to open the school year. And so now they've gotten smaller to prepare, which I think they're happy with, with the addition of the kids coming back. So as I said earlier, we'll always have people addressing concerns about how the calendar is set up. They'll, and it'll be interesting, as you have those conversations and, and what, and they have with their principals, how they feel throughout the year of these other embedded days. So the initial heartburn of the start, how did that contribute later on when you had these other days that many of your, their colleagues advocated for? Those breaks throughout the year and the Thanksgiving and so forth and so on.
Okay, um, and then, uh, you know, a couple of other things, and, and not necessarily that I'm looking for a response, just various feedback. Um, I do believe that some of the need for staff days was pandemic-focused. Um, you know, there was a lot going on, um, and we were extremely understaffed as a division. And I would be interested to see what the feedback would be about those staff days, considering that we don't have those same exact challenges that we were experiencing in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So that's one thing that I think we need to, um, make sure that we're keeping in mind. Another is that, um, the daycares and preschools in the area often use our school calendar to determine what they do, and it can be very difficult for working-class families to have to sprinkle in two or three additional days off. I mean, if you're looking at somebody that works, um, you know, minimum wage or near minimum wage, it's presenting challenges when, um, their children are not in school because of this. So I would like to advocate for maybe trying to find a way to balance these staff days and this start time so that we can maybe, you know, accomplish supporting the families in the community and their needs to provide for their children, and, uh, also make sure that we're supporting our staff. So that's what I have to say there. And, and I, I do hope that the wellness days would also, um, help if we can continue with that. And I know that's a discussion we're gonna be having. Um, who is in the calendar work group, though? That is a question I do have.
So we have, of course, our, our DOSL, DCC, um, HR and school leadership folks, so administrators, principals, uh, teachers, community members and parents, as well as a couple of students.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I appreciate your comment, Ms. Brown, on feedback. This, this is a process that we're continually doing that, and as I said, there's always heartburn at the end product. But we certainly look at childcare. I think that probably is a lot of Ms. Owens' question on that Tuesday and the impact that has on families on a Tuesday versus a Monday. Um, those are things we try to balance out in all of our processes. So know that we will continually be looking at the feedback loop here throughout the year.
And I actually, I did, um, have one more comment to piggyback on that. I, I would have some concern with the fact that it's a, a Tuesday, because I'm really curious what absenteeism is going to look like on that Monday, the fourth, if families decide to use that as an opportunity to take a four-day weekend. So I think that's worth watching.
We do that, the same thing with Thanksgiving on the twentieth and any day preceding the holiday. It's something where we expect high levels, and it's a challenge we have with substitute teachers and so forth. So it's something we certainly always look at of those days before holidays. Are we giving meaningful instruction and, and a purpose for children to be there and staff to be there? It's always something we, we take a look at.
Ms. Franklin. Sorry, just one, one other question. So, um, just to, as a reminder, we did add those dates on the calendar last year, just to kind of refresh my memory, because of starting the flexible schedule, correct? So that's kind of how we embedded some of these specific dates, because it, they coincide with the, some of the frustrations we heard from teachers who were doing, um, both AB and the, the, um.
In some instances, if you look at the November date, that, that was a lot of elementary school. You need a day to finish grades and a day for conferences and, and we, or day for conferences, day to plan. So that first one in November was primarily more of a, uh, elementary, but you're correct. The one in January was the one where they were saying, when we shift from term one to term two, can we have two days?
Cause last year was the first year for flexible scheduling.
Correct.
Yes, so that's, cause I was just trying to remember how we had a very lengthy calendar discussion, so I just wanted to remind. And then, um, do we work with Parks and Rec just to address some of those concerns, right? So we worked specifically with Parks and Rec to ensure that the days that we have scheduled, um, that families do have options, correct? So we're, we're working hand-in-hand with them.
Continually.
Yes, okay.
Every time we have a schedule altered, if we have to dismiss a school early, how's Parks, Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was addressed, that we, we do absolutely, uh, work with Parks and Rec to ensure that families are cared for.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
So, um, when you talk about having teacher input on the committee itself, I'm asking you to please make sure you have at least one elementary, one middle school, one high school. I'd actually love for you to have, but I, I don't know how big the committee is, two elementary, two middle school and two high school teachers from across the city, because I feel like sometimes, um, high school teachers, I realize that many of them are impacted with the four-by-four scheduling. And then that's the other thing, make sure you include teachers, a teacher on that calendar committee who is teaching four-by-four.
It's a good consideration.
And then the other thing is, I don't want elementary teachers to feel that they're being overlooked.
Sure.
Um, and, and as a former elementary teacher, I can tell you that that is the feeling that comes across many times. Oh, those high school teachers, they always get what they want. It's usually because elementary teachers, it's just in general, if you're an elementary teacher, you know, you nurture children, you know, cause you're almost like a mother figure in, in some cases. And you also don't speak up sometimes. You speak to your colleagues, but you don't really speak up to your administrators and let them know, hey, here's how we feel, here's what we want. Um, but elementary teachers need to speak up. I was one of the always, you know, cause you know me, I, I speak up. That's just my personality. But a lot of elementary teachers don't. It's just in their personality, it's in their DNA, okay?
Understood.
But high school teachers do. They speak out and they let us know what's going on, but we don't hear as much. And it's just always the way it is. It's always been that way. It's from the time I started teaching in nineteen seventy-two. So I can tell you, it's just the way it is.
And that is why we also engage with teacher assembly. So we have the calendar work group, but then we take the calendar, the draft calendars to teacher assembly and get feedback from them before, them before we finalize. And I feel like because to your point, they're in smaller, light groups, they're able to maybe get their voices heard in a different way.
Okay.
And they vote.
And from a levity standpoint, Ms. Anderson, elementary school teachers may not be the most vocal, but their principals certainly do a great job of letting us know their desires. but their principals certainly do a great job of letting us know their desires. So more so than either.
Well, hence, we've got the two days for the
Correct, in November.
So we listen to them this year.
And our principals are great advocates for their teachers, especially on the elementary school level.
The other thing I want to say, and this is, this is where we're hearing a lot of feedback. How did y'all come up with this calendar? We don't remember. They don't remember. They feel we put two calendars out and they only had that, those two to choose from. That was it. They don't remember all the work that we did with this. And we've just got to keep repeating over and over. We went through a long process. We had started out with four. And they don't remember all of that. They only see this time and they, and this being paid for. When they say that to me, I'm like, wait a minute. You are being paid for this. Like Dr. Mr. Delaney just told Ms. Brown, they are being paid for these days. It's in your contract. You're being paid for them. So
We'll try and find even more avenues. Yeah, absolutely. I looked back and we did have multiple communication at the time, but of course, you know, a year and change has gone by and then we've started to reengage on this. And I think there's just been a lot that's going on. And so as we get ready to start the school year, we'll make sure to engage very thoroughly about the why and the process itself, because you know, we came back to you all, I think, four times, right? Because we had the vote, the survey vote, and then we kind of made a hybrid related on some of the feedback that you all wanted to include. And so it was a pretty long process, this go around. So hopefully it'll be a little bit more simplified. And the pre-Labor Day versus post-Labor Day was definitely, you know, not an easy issue because you had, it was sixty-fourty, you know, it wasn't like
Right. And I just, it's, we're gonna, we have to do it, I mean, and provide the quality of education we've been providing. So I just want everybody to understand that.
And just a straw poll for us. Do you want us to continue with two years at a time or based on the fact that we're doing this kind of new pre-Labor Day start? Do you want us to start with one year? Obviously, we're open to
What are you guys thinking?
So my feeling is, as much as I'd like to do two years, I really would like to take it slower right now, since we have this pre-Labor Day start.
Yes.
Let's start with one year again. And then if this goes okay, then we can, you know, we can
Everybody shaking their head. So let's, let's just go with the one year since this is new.
Sure.
And then we'll go from there and see how the year goes. Okay?
That sounds great. Anything else from?
Thanks for asking that again, Ms. Allen.
All right. Thank you all for your feedback. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we are thirty minutes ahead of time. So Dr. Spence and I are at fifteen minutes. Obviously, we're up here conversing. So we're gonna let him. Thirty minutes is a long time for a break. So we're gonna let him go ahead and start the budget. Because Dr. Robertson has teachers coming in for his next presentation. So we're gonna skip over that. We'll help, we'll let him stop in fifteen minutes when your people get here, Dr. Robertson, okay? So let's go ahead and start with, with the budget, which is, I'm gonna pass this down for you guys. This was supposed to start at one-thirty, but we're gonna we're gonna let him start. We'll get a couple of minutes. And we'll wait, we'll wait for them to come back. Okay. So.
Are we gonna take a little break? A ten-minute break?
No, just, no, we're gonna wait for them to come back. Okay?
Because we had a break scheduled.
Well, I know we did, but we're trying to go ahead and get started so we can use the time wisely. But they just took a break. Go take a break. You know, we're just gonna go ahead and do the break. We'll go till eleven. You guys want it? Take it. Okay, we're back from our break and we are now going to have, address the teacher time dilemma with Dr. Robertson, our chief of staff. And he has some guests here with him.
That's correct. So good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, members of the board. And Dr. Spence, in today's session, we review what I refer to as a most complex problem. And I call it complex because for, because for every possible solution, there's likely an unintended outcome that we are often, that we are often are trying to use a one-size-fits-most solution when the true holy grail solution is one that is individualized. We really appreciate the board's high interest in finding ways to help teachers complete their many duties and responsibilities. And the fact that you asked for this formal presentation at the retreat indicates the commitment you have to that cause. To address this problem, we will start with the current challenges. Some mandated by state, some mandated by local policy, others necessitated by serving in the role of an educator, and others by choice. I have asked several teachers to join us today as they can provide a voice from the field as you ponder where improvements may lie. And I'd like to introduce them. So we've got Ebony Cherry, a high school teacher. We have Ann Flavin, a elementary school teacher. Jennifer Watson, an elementary school teacher. Laura Knuckles, an elementary school teacher. And James Arnett, a middle school teacher. Thank you for joining us today. Our plan of action is captured here. Again, we will start by reviewing both state and local policies affecting teachers' use of time. We will review how the role of teacher, of a teacher requires more time than exists in the current workday. We will then split into two groups to explore opportunities to address this challenge. Per the standards of accreditation, based in the standard of quality within the Code of Virginia, schools must provide a minimum of one hundred and eighty instructional days or nine hundred and ninety seat hours to all students in K-12. There are further requirements by level. For example, at elementary school, six hundred and eighty of the nine hundred and ninety seat hours must be based in the four core academic content areas. English Language Arts, Math, Science, and History. In addition, minutes need to be provided for art, music, P E, and career exploration. Also, recess accounts for another segment of time. At the middle, at the secondary level, students must receive one hundred and forty clock hours of instruction to receive a standard unit of credit. Further, at the high school level, students must also earn a number of verified credits to meet graduation requirements that include passing of the course and the accompanying S O L test. Per the standards of accreditation, elementary school teachers shall be provided at least an average of thirty minutes per day during the school week as planning time. This can be thirty minutes each day or a combination that adds up to one hundred and fifty minutes per week of planning time. At middle school and high school, teachers shall be provided one planning period defined as forty-five minutes per day or the equivalent time unencumbered of any teaching or supervisory duties. Elementary school teachers, class size generally ranges from nineteen to twenty-six students with the lowest class numbers in K-2. We also have schools and grade levels with class size driven by the state's K-three class size initiative that lowers the number of students per class. Middle school and high school teachers may have one hundred and fifty students in total, teaching no more than twenty-five class periods per week. However, note that health and P E and music teachers may have up to two hundred students per week. And specific staff in the C T E courses also have specific staff-to-student ratios. Per federal and state law, teachers can be required to participate in I E P and five oh four meetings for any student they serve. These are all examples of specific requirements all teachers must follow based on state policy and guidelines. Now let's turn our attention to some local policy. In Virginia Beach City Public Schools, teachers operate within a one hundred and eighty-one day instructional calendar. The instructional day is roughly six point five hours and the workday is seven point three-three hours or seven hours and twenty minutes. Prior to class starting, teachers are engaged in greeting students and preparing for class. At the end of the day, teachers are monitoring dismissal and preparing for any after-school activities. Elementary school teachers receive two hundred and twenty-five minutes of planning per week or roughly forty-five minutes per day, while students are participating in P E or art and music. Elementary school planning can include individual planning, team planning, or P L C time. Each teacher may have a different expectation based on school and teacher needs for how their planning time is scheduled. For example, principals prioritize student needs and teacher support with access to instructional coaches during P L Cs and are mindful to also provide for unencumbered teacher planning time. In middle school and high school, each teacher receives at least forty-five minutes of planning time per day. Similar to elementary school, this planning time could be individual, grade level, content area, or P L C time. Middle school teachers have four teaching periods per day and high school teachers have three of four teaching assignments blocks per day, and these are on average. In addition to required, in addition to required attendance in their students' I E P or five oh four meetings, teachers in Virginia Beach City Public Schools are also expected to participate in students' response team meetings, parent meetings for students they teach. Teachers are expected to participate in college staff meetings, which normally occur after school or on staff days. As part of their responsibilities as a teacher, teachers must maintain open lines of communication with staff, students, and parents. It has been estimated that the average teacher spends two hours per week answering emails and another two hours per week talking with students and parents after the workday has concluded. I would suggest these averages are likely under-reported. With school safety a top priority in Virginia Beach, our teachers may also have a duty assignment beyond their teaching responsibilities. This could be a bus duty, a hall duty, cafeteria duty, or any, any other such duties where an adult presence is needed. And we also know that there have been times when a teacher may be needed to cover another teacher's class as no substitute is available. Although we eliminated the twenty-two-point professional learning requirement for teachers several years ago, our teachers do embrace professional learning. Each year, Virginia Beach teachers have essential professional learning sessions based on changes to curriculum by the Department of Education or Virginia Beach, or they'll have sessions as a result of new legislation passed by the state. They are also able to choose from a plethora of professional learning options based on their own learning needs. Each year, the overwhelming majority of our teachers well exceed the aforementioned twenty-two-point requirement. The last area is the other category. An example of other at the division level is the annual mandatory employee, employee training. Recall, we talked about that last year. And as a result of your input, feedback, and direction, we were able to make adjustments to the annual mandatory employee training for the, for the next year. We had a number of training modules that were placed on a rotation schedule. So it's not every year. And we had a number of new models equipped with the feature where you could take the quiz first. And if you passed the quiz, you didn't have to go through the entire module. So that's an example of direction that you, and input you had already provided to us that we acted upon. But that's an example at the division level that is a requirement for teachers and it's a requirement for all staff that does take time. A school-level example is how staff are deployed for duties. Some schools, based on their individual situation, are able to minimize the use of teacher duties, while others may need to require teachers to have a daily duty assignment for all or part of the year. Now let's look at one more factor in detail, teachers' roles and responsibilities. In this slide, I have provided a general list of areas that teachers will engage with each day. In balance, these collective responsibilities can be met on most days. However, when an issue arises beyond the norm in any one of these areas, time can be stolen from the teacher. And this is where the stress begins. How to accomplish all of the assigned responsibilities and also maintain some type of work-life balance is a daily dilemma for staff. For example, in lesson planning, as a teacher, if my lesson, or if my schedule assignment for the coming year is similar to the schedule assignment I had in the previous year, I can leverage all of the things I used from the previous year and make minor refinements to the process for the coming year. However, if my schedule assignment for the coming year is different than the schedule I enjoyed the previous year or in any other year, the level of lesson, lesson planning just got multiplied exponentially, depending on your familiarity with the topic and your ability to lean on colleagues in your school. Assessment creation and grading. Grading is under the purview of the teachers. I have known teachers that wanted to grade everything, which takes hours to grade everything. I've known teachers who want to grade certain problems, which is an efficiency matter, but then they worry about, if I didn't grade all of the work and only graded some of the work, are the kids gonna do all of the work? Some teachers are, I would say, perfectionists. And if they have one minor line that's not perfect in their assessment creation, they're gonna recreate the whole thing. Some prefer to create their own assessments and not work with a colleague, just because that's what they prefer. Collaboration. If you're blessed, and you should be blessed in the school, to have someone that you can collaborate with, it's a time saver. However, if you were a singleton teacher, meaning you are the only one in the school who teaches calculus, having someone to collaborate with at the school level is not present. Student behavior and discipline. We have teachers that are masters at classroom management. And they do so by providing a rigorous learning experience with clear structures in the classroom every day. We have other teachers that are developing this area and the structures don't exist to where behavior doesn't crop up. We have teachers with a certain mix of students. I recall having a classroom that I had a particular nickname for that despite all of my experience and my presence as a wrestling coach, these kids drove me crazy. And no matter what I tried, it was the entire year. I came to love them at the end because they, they kind of beat me. But it was, it was a learning experience. So you have those. Communication. Some teachers, depending on the time of the year, the emails come fast and furious. And trying to manage those emails and communications back and forth is, is really a skill. And then you've got the other category. Are you, are you, are you, does it happen to be that your schedule is the one block where all the special education meetings are held? Sometimes that happens. Are you the one teacher that is always available first block when we're trying to make sure we have a sub show up? So you're one of the first ones called. Can you come in and watch this class? And these are things, these are the reality of being in the teacher, as a teacher. So let me now review a typical day schedule for an elementary school, middle school, and high school teacher. And when all the areas noted here work as designed, the day is gonna end pretty well. But if a teacher has to attend a meeting as discussed above or has to deal with a student issue that was not planned, then what a teacher thought was gonna be unencumbered time vanishes quickly. And a couple of things to remember as I walk through these examples. All workdays are seven hours and twenty minutes. The instructional day is approximately six hours and forty minutes. So you got about forty minutes. Usually twenty minutes before the school day starts, twenty minutes after the school day starts to prepare for the day, conclude the day. But the meat of the schedule is within six hours and forty minutes. So a typical elementary school schedule, and this is, I'm not going to put the schedule up because, again, this is a typical schedule, it's not an exact schedule. We have elementary schools on different start times. But basically, when the, when the class starts, for ease, I'm going to say eight o'clock, eight o'clock, the teacher arrives. And eight-twenty, the kids are coming in, so they have about twenty minutes to get all their stuff together, greet kids at the door, et cetera. They have a teaching period. Let's say that teaching period lasts to lunch. And let's say lunch is at eleven o'clock. At the elementary school level, you walk your kids to lunch. And then you go back and pick your kids up and walk them back to class. Now, that's thirty minutes. So the reality is, sometimes it's thirty-five, but the reality is, that teacher's not getting on a daily basis all thirty minutes for lunch because they're walking their kids to and from lunch. If it's thirty-five minutes, normally they can get their thirty minutes, but still, that's important. When they come back with their students, they're, continue teaching to a period when their planning starts. And then they get forty-five minutes of planning. That could be individual, it could be grade level, it could be a PLC, it could be with coaches. When the day concludes, elementary school teachers walk their kids to the bus. And they make sure their kids get on the right bus, and then they walk back to class. So there's not a lot of time for elementary school teachers beyond that forty-five minutes. They are probably the most restricted of all of our levels. Middle school. Let's say middle school starts, teachers arrive at nine-ten, the kids start arriving about nine-thirty, class starts. Now, middle schools are on a schedule, they, they, they teach, you know, two or three classes, and then they have their core plus or academics, uh, what, what, middle schools, what's the term? Academic support, and they have duties. They don't walk their kids to and from lunch, the kids go to lunch on their own. So their thirty-minute lunch is a true thirty-minute lunch. They get, in sixth grade? Okay, okay, well, that's good. Alright, so they walk their kids to lunch, that was new to me. And back, alright. Then they get forty-five minutes of planning time, they normally have some type of duty, whether it's, uh, every day or just part of the year. They continue their teaching assignment when dismissal comes. Did they walk their kids to the bus? Okay. Okay, alright, woo, so the kids, kids can, they get their way to the bus. And then the day concludes. Uh, at high school, we start earlier, as noted, seven o'clock arrival is typical for teachers. Day starts at seven-twenty, they teach through lunch. High school teachers do not walk their kids to and from lunch, that is for sure. Uh, and normally, their lunch is combined in their planning block, so it's lunch and planning. Schools that have one lunch, they, they also are able to factor in some time during one lunch when they don't have an assigned duty for lunch there as well. And then at two o'clock, high school teachers do not walk their kids to the buses, so they have a few minutes after school. So in summary, our teachers have set daily schedules that contain time periods that provide time for all the required responsibilities, but there are so many variables, as we have noted on this slide, that do impact the planning time assigned to teachers each day. And with limited time in the workday before student arrival and after student dismissal, the large chunks of time to engage with more detailed work like planning, like grading, like contacting students and parents suffers. So, now we're going to do a group activity. And I'm going to split you guys into two groups, from Ms. Anderson to Mr. Callen, you'll be a group. And Ms. Riggs, if I can get you to go over here and be a group. And I'm going to bring the, ask the teachers to grab their chair and pull up, and I'm going to put Ebony and Anne, why don't you go with this group here? And then Jennifer, Laura, and, and James, why don't you pull your chairs up and go over here? And here's your charge, you got thirty minutes. Alright, thirty minutes. What changes, what specific areas could be revised to provide teachers with additional time? And again, I would utilize the expertise of the teachers that are here. We'll go thirty minutes, thank you very much. Okay, if we can kind of wrap up these conversations. Okay, riveting conversations, I'm sure. So at this point, what we're going to do is, we're going to hear from each group. And my team, well, not my team, Matt's team is going to take notes for anything related to high school, middle school, or elementary school. If there are other general topics, like if there's anything related to human resources, then Ms. Woodhouse will take notes. We may be able to give you some answers today, we may have to come back to you with other answers. So at this point, we really want to hear what was shared in the conversations by the teachers. So, if I can get a spokesperson from this group, Stacy, is that going to be you? Well, she started, looked like she was going to talk, I'm like, okay.
The amount of unpaid labor that I'm just learned about is, is astounding, and I think number one thing we need to do is start tracking that. I'd like to see a sample survey of teachers keeping daily logs of what they're doing at school and at home, so we can see what the depth and breadth of the problem really is. Um, and also, you know, these, these little bits of time, twenty minutes here, twenty minutes there, that's not a time to really orient oneself to a task and then accomplish some of it. So we need larger chunks of time, you know, half-days, full-days, to get some of those, those longer tasks done. I think one of our participants indicated she enters at least twenty-five-hundred grades per quarter. I teach at OU, I might enter sixty in a semester. Um, so that is just mind-boggling to me, the time it would, it takes to do that. Um, you know, on the early release days, having additional early release days to have more of those, that time, having a once-a-month Focus Friday. Um, I mean, we even mentioned doing four-day school, school weeks, like other districts across the nation are doing. I, I'm really astounded learning at how complicated the day is to get everything done that our teachers need to get done. Um, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Um, a couple of, uh, kind of smaller things that perhaps can be looked at is having consistency about expectations, kind of from the jump, what day grades are going to be due. And people can know that it's not this person needs them in two days earlier because they're IT person, and this person, you can have it longer at this school, that you can plan around that because you know exactly kind of what the expectation is going to be. Um, having some consistency perhaps for when after-school meetings can occur, or even whether that's with your admin or with parents, that maybe Monday, Wednesday, Friday would be open for possible these after-school meetings, or that teachers can know your, your admin is not going to plan a meeting next week on Wednesday, when in your mind, you already had that time locked in for something else. And so if, if there was some consistency on, these days are always going to be protected, um, then you can kind of manage your time a little, a little easier. One of the things that I think our group will, uh, keep going back to this, is looking at those transition minutes and where we can reclaim some time, uh, and then allot it accordingly for, for planning or for other purposes. And the other thing that was kind of mentioned is, uh, planning or teaching and learning has made improvements, it sounds like, in some lesson plans and availability. Uh, but having more organized and easy access to kind of remediation activities and extension activities. The core curriculum stuff sounds like it's there and that teachers can access it, but they really want to be able to differentiate for their learners and provide what their individual learners need. And by the time they go through the data to assess who needs what, then they've already used their time that they needed to be able to build out those specific activities. So those were a couple other, other things we.
I can, I can add to that one. It was said that the LA Department writes and develops small-group lesson plans, they've done a really good job of that in the elementary. Um, the elementary was speaking about that. Could possibly the math, could they possibly do that for math? Because that's very helpful, to have the small-group lesson plans. The other thing is utilizing subs, and I, I, obviously, we know how hard it is getting subs to stay in time. I'm hoping that's getting better. I don't know if you have any kind of data that shows that's getting better since, you know, the two years we were out. Hopefully, that we're building them back up. But I know, um, that they still have it in the middle school where they have groups of subs coming in, and they have the collaboration time with the, the, the team, to be able to do that again and, and schedule that for like the second-grade teachers or the third-grade teachers, that's important. That would give them that collaboration planning time. My biggest thing is, and I, and I asked Stacy to say this from the beginning, is looking at, um, you know, a Monday time, having a, a early release or Friday. Something of that is important. And I know COVID was very difficult for everybody in many different ways. But one of the things that we keep hearing, and, and I know, is the, was it Mondays or Wednesdays that we had? That the, the teachers had. That it was so important. And it, they're able to concentrate on the lessons and the students and the data that they need to plan these lessons and to work with these kids. So, I think we need to, to really stress looking at blocks of time to give our teachers to help with this planning, to help with this, this full planning. Somehow, we've got to do that. And I was the one that brought up the four daily, the four-day weeks. I mean, we, I used to think when I was reading it, it was about saving money, but it's not. The four-day weeks are for the students, and the five-day weeks are for the, to keep teachers so they can plan. I mean, they're doing it across the nation. I could never see that happening here, you know, I think it'd be really hard. But it's important to be able to have that time, to have the, the teachers and the education and the, the, the amount of, um, curriculum and development and academics that we expect in Virginia Beach. So I think we, we've got to give them some, some time. And these little twenty minutes here and twenty minutes there, that's a joke, we know that, we know that. So, um, I think we, we're going to have to get really serious now.
I, I had no idea of the depth and breadth of this issue, of this unpaid labor issue. We have got to solve it, or we're going to end up with a work-the-contract movement that is really going to be detrimental to our students. So I think all of us need to come up, come together, find the money and find the solution, because this worries me in the long term, absolutely.
Okay, this group?
First thing that was brought up was, was suggested right off the bat that half-days, was suggested once a month, but I, you know, I was, I pointed out that my, my grandchildren have been in different school districts around the country, and every school district they've been in, except for Virginia Beach, have had half-days on Wednesdays or Mondays. So, um, because other districts have realized that teachers need planning time, they need unencumbered planning time. And taking away their forty-five minutes of PE time once a week, um, in the elementary level anyway, um, is, is detrimental to the fact that they lose that as a planning, that their planning time is gone. And in some cases, not in all elementaries, but in some cases, they, uh, to give them a longer period for that plant, for that, uh, PLC time, they actually, um, booked their PE and their musics, uh, back-to-back so that the teacher has to be out for forty-five minutes of PE time, and then back-to-back with either the music or the art. So they lose that as well, as far as personal planning. And I realize that PLCs are important in some aspects. You have to be able to get together and do collaboration with your grade level or with, with your teams. But at the same time, in some cases, it eliminates that personal planning time that teachers have, need, desperately need, on a daily basis. So, I, I think one of the things we came up with was we, we felt like there are some cases, not every case, but some cases where the PLC meeting really should just be eliminated for that particular week. And that needs to be, you know, maybe instead of having PLCs every week, you know, elementary, especially on the elementary level, that they need to, the principals need to be told, you can have PLCs, but you eliminate at least two a month. So, make the ones that you're utilizing count. Um, and then the other thing was, um, lesson plans, in some cases, they were, uh, they were saying that their lesson plans have to be turned in for the week, but yet at the same time, you know, fire drills happen, things happen, life happens. And so teachers end up, if you've turned it in on Monday, what's happening on Monday, or what's your plan for the week, by Wednesday, you've already changed it three or four times. So, um, in that, that case, they were saying that, you know, those are, that shouldn't happen. Maybe they were saying for P-one teachers or P-two teachers, but, but not for, you know, experienced teachers. And so instead of coming in and expecting, uh, people to turn in their lesson plans, you know, to their administrators, just go to a spot check, where they come in, where they come in to, you know, do a spot check. But you shouldn't have to have them turned in way ahead of time. And, and we, we talked about the fact that we realize that instructional time is sacred. But at the same time, to be, have good instructional time, you have to have efficient planning time. Um, so that, you, you trade one for the other, and so it was, it was suggested that asynchronous, eh? How am I saying that? Asynchronous, I can't say it.
Asynchronous.
Asynchronous, that's what it is, asynchronous, sorry. Um, I can't read my own writing here. Asynchronous time can be utilized on those days that already are assigned for, um, uh, professional development. They could be asynchronous days instead of just, so you get back some instruction time as well as just, you know, giving the teacher, uh, time that they can be utilizing that time maybe at home. They could be home with their own children, but yet having an asynchronous day, you know, for instruction to be happening. Um, that we need to be real, realizing that that, those, those days are important too. And one of the things that they were saying that's, actually, it was pointed out that sometimes teachers get too many surveys. Um, and then here, we're talking about doing more surveys, but, you know, surveys are important, as long as they're not being overutilized. Anything else? Go ahead, anybody else?
Um, and so, a little more detail on the surveys is that, you know, maybe you could separate out the parts of the survey and then just put a comment box for that part so that they're able to put meaningful comments into the surveys, um, if they have feedback. Because it said some of the surveys can take fifteen to thirty minutes and. And, you know, I do recognize the whole nickel and diming, you know, 15 minutes here, 15 minutes there. But the solution's not going to be in any one, one thing. And talent ed goal setting was brought up. I recognize that that comes down from the VDOE. I don't know if there's any. It, it does.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's a state requirement that's attached to the teacher evaluation system. But I think we can look at the consistent practices and what can be provided to the teachers.
Okay, so there may be some opportunities there still. You know, and I, I do, I think the asynchronous thing personally, and this is, you know, not necessarily the consensus of the group. I, I do think the asynchronous thing has some merit. I, I do believe that maybe as a division, we should be looking towards flexibility for families with different situations. So for example, if, if my kids had an asynchronous day, I would be able to manage that. You know, and other families may not. And, you know, I do believe that we need to take into account that when this division went to all day kindergarten, part of the feedback that we got was that people wanted to have their children able to be in school all the time. So we, we do have to play that balancing act when we're talking about, you know, a day a month here and day a month there and asynchronous. So I wonder if there's a way to allow people to select asynchronous for the families that like that. And then, you know, with the remainder of the time, and this is just something that came up with all the feedback here. You know, the, the instructional staff kind of divide up the children that are in school so that they have that half a day planning day. You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense? That they're almost subbing the class and working together to do that. And I, I know that could probably get a little sticky in the details, but I do think that maybe it's worthy of evaluation. I also did some quick math and based on what I was hearing, contract hours are probably going to be needing to be increased three to 5% in order to really, you know, without any meaningful changes otherwise to make sure that our instructional ta- staff has the time they need to get everything accomplished. And, you know, that's, that's just based on an hour and 25 extra a week. So that's, that's what I got. So, thank you.
The only thing I was going to add is I, I think that's an easy fix though. For example, we were looking at 11:03, that's already a work day, right? A teacher work day. So to save, I think this is, again, just a real quick easy fixes on those days that it's already a staff day, that we allow them to choose asynchronous for those days because, you know, they're spending another 15 minutes, half hour. I, I have no idea where everyone lives, but, you know, they're spending time in the car where they could actually be using that to get work done. So I think that that might be, again, a good opportunity for them and an easy fix because the rest of it's very complicated. Again, it feels like between the required instruction time and based on their contract hours, they are not given enough time to make sure that they have the capability to do the things they need to do. So, yeah, I think that that's definitely a discussion that we need to look at as we're exploring this further. Thank you.
Just want, just want to point out real quick that we did talk about the November 3rd day, for example. And, and I pointed out, because I was an elementary teacher, most elementary teachers use that as, they, they don't use it for planning that day. Elementary teachers are going to be using that for teacher conferences with their parents. So that, that, that can't be. You can't take those conferences away. Those are, those are too embedded in, into what we do. And maybe probably even November 6th, which is also, I think it's considered a flex day. So that could, that could be turned into an, you know, another, and some teachers probably will use that as a conference day as well. So if you have a lot of students, you know, you might utilize that day as well. But, but, you, you know, you can't take the conference days away, but you can turn those into asynchronous days where students are actually having instruction going on. So we can pull back, we're actually adding instruction within a asynchronous day there.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. I think we just maybe need to look at that at the different levels. Because, you know, for middle and high school, that probably would work, but then we may, might have to take a special consideration for elementary schools as well. But again, that's why it gets very complicated for, in the discussion.
Okay, so thank you very much for engaging in this conversation. Again, you, you had 35 minutes. And in 35 minutes, you touched on a lot of issues. At this point in time, you have brought forward some ideas that are implementable. And there are other ideas that you've brought forward that we need to check state code, which could absolutely impact whether or not that idea can be explored further. So what will happen now is we've all been taking notes on the items that you provided. We'll go through each of these items that you've provided and provide a response. Again, some of these items, we can take action on. Like, for example, Ms. Woodhouse has been working with DOSL to make sure that the talent ed goal process is streamlined for schools next year. And that was a result of feedback we got earlier. But they are required. We can, we have absolutely heard from elementary school teachers this year with, through Dr. Spence's teacher advisory group about the use of PLC times. And that in, in schools, the teachers were asking for some flexibility on required PLC times. Because in their particular setting, they didn't need as much PLC time. So that's something we can look at protocols. We don't have any official protocols for establishing a PLC times. We can look at creating those. DTOL continues to build out their resources in, in areas of small group or the remediation enrichment resources. So there are a lot of things that you provided to us today that we can act upon. So what, again, what we'll do is we will go back, look at each of these items, provide a summary to the board. If at that point anything else comes up or anything wasn't mentioned that you know you talked about, then you bring that back as part of that feedback loop. And I would say within, you know, four to six weeks, we should be able to wrap this thing up on what we can do right now, what we may need to leverage out of legislation, and what at this point we can't do because of legislation. Yes, Ms. Owens.
This is based on something you said at the beginning about the lunch in elementary. Are some of our schools doing 30 minutes and some of our schools doing 35 minutes?
Danielle.
So the student lunch would be consistent for 30. Some might have the flexibility on their master's schedule. It's like a calculus equation fitting in all of the different blocks of time that you have to balance. Generally, you'll see a 30-minute block on the master's schedule and teachers will just leave a few minutes early to get their kids on time through the line. So you won't usually see like a 35-minute block there, but we adjust as teachers, we walk early to get there.
Okay, so everybody has a, a 30-minute block. They could maybe leave their classroom two or three minutes before their 30-minute block so that they are at the lunchroom on time. They're pulling those two or three minutes from whatever else it was allotted to do.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so again, at this point, we're not ready to identify any things that may need to come back through perhaps the policy review committee as an example. But we will get back to you within a couple of weeks to, here's our, what we found based upon what you shared and give you one more chance in the feedback loop. And then take that feedback and determine what we can implement for next year. So it was a timely conversation. And I want to thank all the teachers for volunteering their time to come in today on short notice. Thank you very much. Your input makes a difference. We'd also like you to stay and have lunch with us. So please, and at this point, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Yes, please do. Okay, so, and lunch is available next door. So we, you know, you're invited, our guests are invited to, to all partake in that. Thank you very much, teachers. We appreciate this extra time. I have to say, one of our teachers in our group even has a second job down at the beach. Sensations for, because to make ends meet. So there again, I'm hoping you'll see a little bit of relief with our budget this year and getting more paid, more pay. And then we have another teacher that engaged with us that does a huge amount of coaching. So, and then the, the other teachers are just doing all the huge amount of work. All of you guys are, we know you are. We sincerely want to do something to help out. So please know that we're going to work very hard and push very hard to see what we can do. Thank you, Dr. Robertson, for being able to outline the things that you knew you could do. And so we'll work really hard. I know, I, I keep hearing that we have, we're top-heavy in administration. But I have to say, our administration works very hard to get lessons out, to help, when we heard about the lessons today and more lessons to provide with our teachers. So I dare say there's anybody sitting around at a time and they're just getting paid for it. They're working very, very hard all year long. And I want, I want to say again, I appreciate all of you out there that do all the extra work. And I know that Dr. Spence has been very careful in keeping our administration the, the parts that we need and the parts that we didn't, and reestablishing them in other places if we needed to. So thank you very much, everyone. I did want to mention that because it's important to know that you guys are working really hard for our division. So thank you. And now lunch is being served. So there we go.
Where?
Next door.
Okay.
113. Okay, when you go out, you go to your left. Our retreat, starting with Dr. Spence, with the budget development process and priorities. And you have that sheet that he passed out right before our, our break last time. Dr. Spence.
Thank you. So the, let me just say about the budget calendar that's in front of you. This is draft, draft, draft. The CFO has not even seen this, it's kind of hot off the presses. So, I mean, her budget team has. And this is a first draft for discussion with you all. Several of you had requested that we discuss the budget process at the retreat. And so we will do that. In addition to, I hope we're able to also discuss, as we have traditionally done here at the retreat, any budget priorities that you want us to have as an initial round of consideration. And you'll see the, the need for an early conversation around that as we go through the calendar. So I'm going to go through the calendar and then we'll talk about priorities. So process for calendar, for the development of the budget really is laid out in this calendar. And as you can see, the first formal presentation of the calendar will come to you at the September 12th board meeting. It will be presented for your consideration and then for action at the end of September. And then what's in here following that will then drive the budget process. Most of that is an internal process through October up to December. And then in December, we'll begin with some of the public conversations. So the reason for that is that in, beginning in October, budget requests begin to be submitted by senior staff and the department budget managers to the Office of Budget Development. And then budget meetings are scheduled with each department to go over those requests so that there's a good understanding of what those requests are. In November, of course, there's traditionally been, and I assume there will continue to be, a five-year forecast that is presented in a joint meeting between the school board and the city council. The five-year forecast is intended to give the school board and city council a general picture of the economic forecast for the region as well as predicted growth rates, for example, in local revenue. In December, budget staff really is then working on, on some kind of nuanced things. You can see their recommended part-time hourly rates coming in from HR to the Office of Budget Development. The facilities team is working during this timeframe to develop a capital improvement program, which would be the first look for that group at the next six-year capital improvement program. And that comes to, to the superintendent in December. And then December typically is when you would have your first public budget hearing. The purpose, as we've talked about in the past, for that first public budget hearing is not to get feedback on a proposed budget, but to solicit input on the front end of the budget development process. So during the October to December timeframe, the internal staff, the budget managers and senior staff are working to develop requests for the budget. And then in December, we get public input. And we will also be in, during that time, considering any conversations that we have with you all about priorities. Typically, we would have another one in October around budget priorities with you all. We get around the third week of December every year, an estimate of state revenues that are released by the Department of Education. Those are typically built on the governor's two-year budget. And so that comes in and then that helps us begin to narrow down what we think the available funding will be from the state. Also, around that time, we begin to get projections from the city around what they think the revenue may look like through the revenue sharing formula. And so it's really by the end of December that we begin to get a picture of what the budget may look like and then start thinking about how does that align then with requests from the departments. That's all right. I didn't know if you had any commentary for me. But that is, that, that, that end of, end of December timeframe is when we really start to get a picture of what the potential revenues may be and how that aligns with the capital improvement program as well as the, the budget requests that are being submitted by internal staff. And so then you can see as a result of that, beginning to get a better picture of what the revenue is going to look like, that's when the Office of Budget Development really begins to dive deeply into those budget requests and to try to refine and summarize those requests so that we can get to, get to a place in January where a first draft of an operating budget comes to the superintendent and to the senior staff. So that process really is one of saying, okay, now we've seen and we've talked with all of you about your budget requests and what you think we may need for the next school year. We've heard what the board has said its priorities are. We've had some, a public input. Here's where the, we begin to then align all of those things with what we think the revenues are going to be to present our first draft, which you see there on January 23rd of an unbalanced operating budget presented to the superintendent and senior staff. Between the 23rd and the 6th of February, then it's the job of the superintendent to work with the budget development staff to get that into a balanced budget for presentation through the superintendent's estimate of needs. Our goal, and, and we talked a little bit about this last year during the estimate of needs presentation, because we have a revenue sharing formula, the goal in Virginia Beach traditionally has been to present a balanced budget. And so that's not necessarily how it's done everywhere. So a superintendent's estimate of needs without a revenue sharing formula typically would be considered a true estimate of needs. You would put everything that you think you need to request into that budget. You would lay that out and then you would seek school board approval through conversation. And then whatever that final approval is, you would then go to your appropriating body, whether that's county supervisors or a city council. And you would say, this is what we think we need. And then there would be negotiations on that between those groups. Because we have a revenue sharing formula, we try to present a balanced budget so that when we go to city council and we go to the school board, we can say, this is within the revenue we are projected to get from the city and from the state. And so, whenever, at least the last nine years that I've presented a budget here, it has always been one that has been balanced against those projected revenues. And then, we have always had a section that talks about unmet needs, which is really the piece that was then not met in the balanced proposal. And so, that is traditionally presented in early February. The reason for that is that you have to map backwards from when the school board needs to approve it and then it needs to go to city council. City council needs time to deliberate on that request. And then, they ultimately have to adopt a budget no later than May 15th, which includes the school board's budget. So, if you map backwards from there, you can see why the first meeting in February is the necessary timeframe for the first presentation of that so that it gives you enough time for a number of workshops and public hearings, which occur as those, I think at this point, everybody's been through the process. So, you know, there is a weekly meeting beginning February 6th that goes all the way through March 5th. March 5th is the anticipated adoption date by the school board. And so, those weekly meetings in between are both to have budget workshops as well as public hearings on the proposed budget. And post-March 5th, after the budget's adopted by the school board, it goes to city council. There is always a time in April when staff and board leadership go over to city council to discuss the budget in a public meeting and present what we're asking for and why. And then, again, the anticipated approval date for the city budget, which includes the school board's budget, becomes no later than May 15th. So, that's the current budget process and budget calendar. Again, this is only a draft and in September, you would have a final version. But one of the reasons to talk about it here is to see if there are questions about that or to see if there are additions or changes that need to be made to that calendar before it comes to you in September. So, I'll pause there. We'll get to the priorities conversation in a minute, but I'll pause there and see what questions you might have or comments.
Ms. Milne.
So, this, this is really good. So, I think what this does, not only for the board but for the public, is make it perfectly clear, at least to me it is, that from the development of the budget in September to May 15th, giving the states, the state revenues, city council, what part they're contributing. It appears to me that there's really never a time that we're not budget-focused and forward. Like, this goes from September to May and then sometimes we're still waiting for even the state to tell us what their revenues are. So, we are always budget-forward. And I mention that because there are, there are some times that we hear from the public and they make it seem like we do all of this on the fly and that there's no real input or procedure that's followed. And so, I really appreciate this because this lays it all out there that the budget department and others are busy 12 months a year.
Yeah, so I'll layer just one piece onto that. So, that's right. So, this is only to get the budget passed here locally. So, that's the local budget. But obviously, given the amount of state funding that comes into the school board's budget, that doesn't end the budget process for our team. We're still then waiting to hear from the state. And usually, we've heard something by now, but we have not yet heard anything from the state about anything they're going to do differently with the budget other than the skinny budget that we got, that we based much of our budget on. So, we're still kind of waiting to see. They have not been able to reconcile the budget for the second year, which is okay. I mean, they have a two-year budget, so it isn't, it isn't a significant issue at the state level, but it does create some uncertainty for us relative to, will there be additional funds coming? Will there be less funds coming? Because we just haven't heard anything from them yet about their ability to reconcile between the House budget and the Senate budget and the governor's budget. But usually, that happens after May 15th. And then, we come back to the board typically around June for a conversation to say, okay, well, here's what we now know the state's budget is and here's how it impacts what your operating budget that you approved is. And there typically have to be some adjustments. I mean, we get an estimate from the state, but it's rarely exact. And so, usually, there are some adjustments and that will often happen in June, sometimes July. It's happened one time since I've been here in September or October and I don't know when this one's going to adjust or if it's going to adjust. And then, in addition to, in addition to that, the budget office is, yeah, always working because they are also, for example, we're now in the closeout period for last year's budget. So, as you all know, the fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30. And at June 30, then the budget staff has to begin in closing out the prior year's budget, even as we begin to get into the new budget. And so, that closeout process takes a while, which is why typically around October, we will come back, staff will come back to the board and talk about the closeout and any unspent revenues. And there will be a true-up. The city will do its closing out and they will true-up their budget. They will find out if they came in under or over revenue projections. And then, we true-up with them based on our revenue sharing formula. And then, we will talk with the school board about unspent revenue on the school side. Typically, we try to shoot, as we've had these conversations before, to be around 2% unspent. And then, if there were additional revenues that became available from the city, then that's also part of that final budget reconciliation. And then, that's where in October, we will come to the board and have the conversation about the reversion process, where by law, we're required to then revert those funds. If we have unspent funds or new funds that come from the city, those are all reconciled into our budget and then we revert those to city council. And then, there's an ask, every year, there has been, at least in my time here, an ask from city council to return those funds. So, we revert them and ask for them to come back for various purposes. And then, the last year, for example, you'll remember, most of that was for capital improvement. So, most of that was for capital outlay. So, yeah, budget is, it's not a, it's not even just a September to May 15 process. It's a year-round process.
Thank you for that. Any questions on that part? Okay. Okay. Question?
Okay, so, thank you. I appreciate all this information. It's very useful. Are you asking for priorities right now or no?
No, I was thinking we'd get to that next and just, you know, there had been some questions about the budget process. So, I wanted to talk about the process first and see if there were questions or any additions or anything that folks thought maybe needed. And then, we can talk about priorities.
You know, and I just have one comment. You know, I, I think that sometimes the public sees the budget as higher and there's, you know, a disconnect. And I think that, and I just did some rough math. It looks like roughly $42 million difference between '22, '23 and '23, '24. I do wonder if there's a way maybe to show where we're at with the budget and then show where the additional funds went to so that the public can see what was spent on you. You had mentioned something very useful when you did your presentation of the estimate of needs, which is that 1% increase in pay is roughly $5 million. And, you know, just going off my memory. And, you know, to show that that 1% is $5 million so that the public can really see that, I do think could be valuable in that document exactly where that additional revenue is going. Of course, excluding the reversion funds. So, I just wanted to see if maybe that was something that there's room for conversation surrounding.
Yes, and just to be, so, I just want to make sure I know what you're asking for. So, in the budget document itself that's approved, there are line item comparisons between the prior year and the new school year. So, if it's the '22, '23 budget, if you look in there, you'll see the '21, '22 school year compared to that. So, you can see a line item difference in where the money is in terms of growth. But to your point, it is always outlined pretty clearly in upfront in the CION, in the estimate of needs. You know, if you, there's a page in there, I just want to call it page 28, but I could be wrong. But anyway, there's a page in there every year in the CION that lists, here's where all the new revenues are going. And it just, it goes line item by line item in terms of, okay, here's, it's called the budget balancing sheet. And it's, here's all the new revenue. And then, it kind of goes down to zero. And it starts with usually the larger numbers, which in this case were compensation. Everything was compensation-driven in this last budget for the most part. And so, that, hopefully, that's pretty clear in terms of where the new money went. But there is, outside of that budget balancing sheet, there is another place in the budget where you can see a year-to-year analysis by line item.
And I see that here now that you pointed it out. So, thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you for refreshing my memory. That'll make it easier for me to draw attention to that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And if you have suggestions on how we could draw attention to that in the communications, we'd be happy to try to think that through with you.
Anybody else on this part of the presentation? Okay, so, Dr. Spence, you want to start with priorities?
Yeah, so, this, this next part of the conversation is really for you all to talk to us. We traditionally during the, during the retreat, asked the board to share with us what your budget priorities, your initial thinking about budget priorities will be. We do not, as you can see by the calendar, have any sense of what the revenue picture will look like. All we have is the five-year forecast. The five-year forecast had an anticipated growth of something like 2% to 3%. Does that sound right, ladies? 2%, 3% in the five-year forecast? Yes. So, we don't have any of those preliminary estimates from either the state or the city in terms of what the budget might look like. We won't have those, as I said, until the end of, until the winter. But we do like to, as we ask the departments and the chief officers to begin thinking about their budget requests, we like to be able to remind them that these are the board's priorities and yours are going to need to fit inside of that. A good example of that, last year, it was clear to everybody that compensation was going to be the major priority. We were undertaking a compensation study. And so, we more or less told every department, really don't put a lot of requests in here because the money's going to go to compensation. And so, we asked people to be very careful with making any additional requests. And, you know, departments can make requests on any number of things within their line items. They have personnel, they have professional development, they have travel, they have materials, all kinds of, you know, technology. So, there are a lot of things within a department's line items. But, you know, if we know the board's priorities are, hey, we're going to keep, we're going to keep compensation at a focus and healthcare or whatever those things are, then we tell folks, don't look to increase those line items. So, put that out there and open it up for discussion.
Can I ask a question? With this upcoming school year budget, what is the compensation part playing in that? A continuous, the continuing with that?
So, two things. One, a little hard to say right now because we don't know what's going to happen at the state level. So, it's kind of an interesting day, actually. J-LARK, which is the legislative research body that does various studies for the state generals, for the General Assembly, just came out with a report today about K-12 funding. And as may have been anticipated, indicated that Virginia is chronically underfunding K-12 education and outlined a number of key points around that. And one of the, the things that I say is interesting about that is that it's, that's coming out to the tune of about $4 billion. They're suggesting an underfunding of K-12. And that's coming out at a time when the General Assembly has an over $1 billion surplus that it needs to figure out what to do with. And there's a lot of debate about that, as you know. There's kind of a, should we do corporate tax cuts or should we put it into education? That seems to be kind of the two, it's kind of the House's version of spending that as corporate tax cuts. And then, the Senate's version is education spending. And so, there, that's where the reconciliation has not happened that I was talking about earlier. So, I say all of that to say, I'll be curious to know if that influences their conversations. With that said, we don't know what's going to happen with that. So, if we knew we were going to have an influx of new state money, for example, I could, we could address some of the compensation things. Or it could be next year's conversation. Okay, that was a big answer to get around to the answer to your actual question, which is, what got, what did not get funded in the compensation study? If you remember, we have the two pay scales. We have the instructional and we have the unified. And we did not have enough money to fully fund the recommendations for the unified pay scale. We were able to go from, to a 1% step increase from steps 0 to 14. And was it 14 or 15? 0 to 14. And then, from steps 15 to 30, it was 1.5%. And the recommendation was to go to 1.5% for the entire unified scale, just like we did for the instructional scale. So, there's a cost to that. And that would probably be our first compensation recommendation. We're going to go ahead and get that fixed on. Do you remember the cost to get it to, to do that? Okay, so about 7.5 million would be needed to finish that. So, that would be the one big fix on the compensation side, relative to the compensation study itself. Once that was done, then the compensation study recommendations would have been fully funded. And then, of course, you know, because there's a 1.5% step increase, the board's going to have to put that in its budget. So, that's in there now and that'll have to go into its budget. And so, those numbers will be put together for the board to consider during the first round of discussions. But that'll, that'll have to get funded at a minimum. And then, largely, what the board would take up from a compensation conversation would be, would there be an additional cost of living increase above the 1.5% step increase? So, does that answer that question?
And second question on the benefits, the health insurance and all of that. Are we going to continue having to negotiate with the good, the great costs that we got this year? Is it, how long was that supposed to last for? Do we continue negotiating for that? What's?
So, health, health, health insurance costs continue to increase. We have been able to offset, so we did two things. Two years ago, we invested in a substantial amount, about $8 million, into employee premiums to subsidize employee premiums essentially. That's something that we heard from this board and we knew we had to do to be competitive, particularly with one of our neighbors who we always were hearing, you know, their health insurance costs are so much better than ours. We've now really largely closed that gap with that investment. And we were able to hold a premiums level this year. That's generally through the health insurance fund. But those costs are going to continue to increase. There's, and you're probably in a position now where you're going to have to consider raising employee premiums. And otherwise, you're going to deplete that fund. And you don't want to be in a position where you've completely depleted that fund. But that is a conversation that the benefits committee needs to have as you're looking at that jointly with the city. Did you want to speak to that at all, Cheryl? You're nodding, so you might want to come up and...
No. You know what? Can I, can I? I asked for a seat at that table many, many years ago. But we don't have a school board rep that meets with that group. I always thought that was important. I even promised not to say anything. I just wanted to hear so I could understand. But, but, somebody should be on that.
So, currently, the benefits executive committee consists of staff from both cities and schools. So, we do meet regularly. I myself serve on that committee. Crystal Payne and other members of the Virginia Beach team, along with the city's HR department, their budget and benefit folks as well.
But no city council member?
No city council members.
Then I'm okay with that.
And/or school board members, yes. But, so, I did want to provide an update. At our last meeting, it was determined, at least for this upcoming school year, that we would not have to increase employee out-of-pocket premium costs. But it's exactly what Dr. Spence said. You're going to get to a point with the increased overall of insurance costs, whether or not... You're going to get to a point with the increased overall of insurance costs, whether or not you can continue to fund to the level that we're funding without depleting the revenues at hand. But at this point, for this upcoming year, both the city and schools agreed that the out-of-pocket premium costs would not be increased. The committee also asked our vendor Mercer to take a look at, the next concern that comes up from our employees is the high deductibles. And so we've asked Mercer to investigate and present some options, just so that could become a part of the conversation as well when we reach that point of request, what it would look like if we are able to reduce the out-of-pocket deductible costs for our employees.
So what you're saying is, that's another piece of this that we're going to have to look at for this upcoming budget? Or is that? For increased cost of, of health insurance?
Right, not for the premium cost. But if there is a package that presents itself that allows the board to lower the deductibles, there definitely would be a cost associated to that. We have no idea yet. Our vendor was just asked to look into that as we too plan in our offices around budget priorities and some things that we can offer to the board. We started looking into that because although we received a lot of compliments from our employees about the out-of-pocket premium cost, the next thing that came up was the high-cost deductible.
One other thing about compensation that I should probably mention, it's, it's kind of one of the unfinished pieces of compensation that we've been phasing in, and that is the educational allowances. And so you remember, we took an additional step towards getting those to be competitive in the region during the last budget, but we did not go as far as we originally recommended based on wanting to get other things addressed with the compensation studies. So there's about, just under $2 million left to get the educational allowances funded at a rate that's competitive in the region.
Okay. And can you explain, just to make sure everybody understands what the educational allowances means?
Yep, so those are allowances for advanced degrees. I forget the percentage of our teaching staff that has an advanced degree. I want to say it's around seventy percent, is that?
It's high.
Yeah, it's very high.
It's high. It's one of the, so I'm confident I'm right when I say all of the region, regional districts offer allowances for advanced degrees. It's one of the ways that they supplement the, the base salary for employees. And so it's important that we remain competitive with that, because if you don't have that, then that just detracts from your base number for folks who are looking at different places in the region to work. So right now, we're not competitive. We had gone, I think it was like since 1996, when we first started looking at this a few years back, without looking at that. And so we were not competitive with those allowances. And we are closer to that now than we have been, but we are not still at the top of the region, which again was the board's direction to us in the compensation philosophy discussion.
Okay, Ms. Brown, you had your hand up a minute ago before. Did you want to say something?
Okay, so I just, since you asked for priorities and, you know, I, I agree we need to finish funding the unified pay scales, particularly for me, my, my main focus is on the custodians and food service workers. You know, those positions seem to be a struggle to get filled and maintain qualified individuals in. And so I would like to give them an income that shows them that we value them, and they do a good job. I also agree with the educational allowances, and I, I also want to make an extra plug for some special, special education considerations, which I'm sure you'll, I'll bring up anyway, but I just want to make sure that I bring that up. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else right now have any priorities? He said, we're asking for them now.
And again, just a reminder, this is the first round of this discussion. We'll ask this conver, we'll ask this question again in October, and, and then obviously we will get into a heavy conversation around that in the January, February timeframe. But it is helpful for us to know kind of on the front end.
Ms. Martin?
One thing I just want to point out, and I saw that J-LARQ study summary just come through. The federal DOE has changed the public service loan forgiveness requirements and dropped down full-time work to 30 hours a week, which could really benefit our employee, like Powell's teachers, other teachers that are at 29. If we can bump them to 30, they can then qualify for PSLF. Now, I understand that's got some benefit implications. But as we take a look at the quick summary on that J-LARQ study, if we can get some more funding for support staff, that would be a step I would like to see us take, because then those teachers can then pursue their bachelor's and master's and graduate degrees using the PSLF program as well. So that's something I'd like to see as a priority. Certainly agree with the unified pay scale and the professional development or tuition reimbursement program. I'd also like us to take a look, as we work on CTE and workforce development, on some additional subsidies for dual enrollment for workforce certifications for our students. I think that's an important piece going forward as we work on whether or not we can get fast-forward courses open to our high school students. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, ideas? Well, I'm going to, since we have this today with Dr. Robertson's presentation, I'm not sure if it's going to, how much money it would go into, but I would like to look into some kind of relief, some kind of way to help our teachers and our, with their planning. Is this, this going to be a budget item? Is this going to be a cost, most likely? I'm really looking for, I'm just going to throw it out there. One day, one week a month being a four-day week. I want it to be a priority. I want to give our staff, our teachers, this time to plan for their, their students. We've been hearing it, we hear it over and over and over again. So I would like to see this on our budget and see what it looks like. Ms. Owens?
I know that we're going to get presentation information, I think tomorrow, about behavioral interventions, but I'd like us to be considering whatever budgetary impacts we may need to have some kind of a plan that's going to help address the elementary behavior situation where we know we have RA as a resource for our older students. So I'd like that to be a priority.
Thank you. I think that's several of ours. So thanks for remembering to break that up. Anybody else? Ms. Anderson?
So, speaking to what Ms. Owens just brought up, if it means hiring more behavioral intervention professionals, I, I would be in favor of adding that to our budget priorities. I think that's, we need to dedicate, put our money where our mouth is when it comes to addressing behavior. So if we need more intervention, if we need more specialists, let's look at that. Let's also look at what we can do, for example, and this has been on my priority list for a while, but what we can do for elementary, we have renaissance when it comes to sixth through 12th grade, what we can do for intervention, but what we can do, and I, I know it's going to be a budget impact, but where, what can we do with severe behavior problems in the elementary level? Do we need a specialty set of classrooms designed for that? Do we need specialty teachers designed to, I mean, with, with educational opportunities to help with that? I, I'd like us to really take a really, really strong look at what we can do to help, because not only do those children who have behavior problems need help and intervention, but it's taking away from the rest of the students who are there to learn, who are there, who don't have those problems. And so the teachers are having trouble addressing the needs of everyone, including those who have problems, but also for the children who don't have as severe problems, it's taking away from their teaching time for them. So we have to somehow come up with a solution to address what we do with those, those severe behavior problems on the elementary level. It's sad that we have to have so many times during the semester or year, whatever, that teachers have to remove the entire class because of one particular student who interrupts that class. And I get it, that we have to follow the guidelines. But at the same time, we need to address that particular student in a way that's going to be helpful for that student, but also be helpful for the rest of the students that have lost instruction time. So I really, really think we need to take a look at, looking at some alternative classrooms in our system to deal with those students on a temporary basis, just to give them some help or get them over whatever it is, the problems that they're having. We need to be able to address those situations. It's very difficult when you have fourth, fifth grade students, even third, second grade students, that, you know, we, we don't know what to do with them. We, we can't really put them in an alternative situation. So we need, I think that should be one of our priorities, is to deal with that elementary intervention problem.
Thank you. Anything else?
Well, and I'll just add to that. We, we'll talk more about that tomorrow as we have the conversation around behavior and some things that are already on the table and some ideas that we have, and that'd be an opportunity to weigh in again from a budget perspective.
Right, thank you. Okay, and I'm assuming, maybe I'm wrong, let me know, school board members, we still want to continue with the compensation and continuing with the pay scales, and, and we don't want to just say, oh, we did it this year, we don't have to do it next year. I mean, are we on the same?
On the same page.
Same page? Do I? No? Thought?
Well, a thought would be that that's worthy of discussion, not making an assumption that we've already arrived at what we need to do, but realizing that we've got to explore it and discuss it. Again, if dollars are being extended, they're coming from taxpayers. So we have to always be mindful of that and not just make an assumption that there's a never-ending supply of resources and dollars available. Let's be good stewards of the dollars that are available through the citizenry.
Always.
Okay, well, that's it for me, and I know we have a 2:15 presentation on assessment from Dr. Baniki, so if you all are ready to move to that, rock on.
Welcome, and your, your is on assessments and the purposes and the types that we have. And Dr. Robertson and you, Dr. Baniki, are both going to be presenters for this.
Yes.
So I'm sure we're all excited about hearing about this. There's been so many added and taken away that I don't know where we are, so I'm sure everybody would like to know this.
Right.
Hence, that's why we asked to put this on the agenda.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, members of the school board and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, Dr. Robertson and I will be presenting information related to assessments and their role in determining the quality of education that students receive. In our time together, I want to start out with a brief rationale for this presentation and why we're focusing on the National Assessment of Educational Progress, more commonly referred to as the NAP, how the NAP compares to the Virginia SOL assessments, potential changes to assessments in Virginia, and implications for measuring educational quality. One reason that we wanted to share information about the NAP is that the results from the most recent administration of the assessment has been mentioned on the national news. And within the past two years, two different reports have been released from the Virginia Department of Education with references to the state's performance on the NAP. The first report titled, "Our Commitment to Virginians: High Expectations and Excellence for All Students," was provided by Jill Ballow in May 2022, who was then the Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction. The second report from the Virginia Department of Education is titled, "Recommendations of the Secretary of Education and the Superintendent of Public Instruction to Promote Excellence and Higher Student Achievement in Response to House Bill 938," and was released last month. The second report includes recommended legislative reforms, Board of Education actions, and department projects focused on the state's accreditation system and proficiency standards. Because the NAP figures so prominently into the recommendations from the state, we thought it would be helpful to provide the school board with a brief history of the assessment. The NAP developed out of a desire to adopt a national measure of student achievement and progress following the Great Space Race that began with the Russians' launch Sputnik in 1957. The first NAP data collection occurred in 1969 as a trial assessment for seventeen-year-old in-school students and measured citizenship, science, and writing performance. Later that same year, nine and thirteen-year-old students were also assessed. The samples were selected by age, not grade initially, because of the concern that grade cohorts would be affected by state policies on entering the first grade as well as promotion and retention. In 1983, the Educational Testing Service, or ETS, became the contractor for the NAP and implemented several changes to the assessment, including changing the sampling plan to include grade levels and for the first time, students with disabilities. They also used a different mathematical model, referred to as item-response theory, which allowed for placing results for students given different testing booklets on a common scale, and vertical scaling, which puts students at different grade or age levels on the same scale. The 1983-84 NAP assessment also saw the introduction of anchor points for presenting results to the general public. The method selected anchor points along the scale and then described what most students at each anchor point knew and could do that students with lower scores were unlikely to have mastered. The changes to the NAP eventually resulted in the NAP splitting into two strands, main NAP, which used the changes I just described, and uses samples by grades, and was referred to as long-term trend NAP that uses samples based on age. The areas and grade levels assessed changed over time, as did the contractors responsible for the assessment, until 1988, when the Elementary and Secondary Education Act amendments resulted in the formation of the National Assessment Governing Board, also referred to as the Governing Board. The Governing Board became responsible for setting NAP policy and preparing the frameworks for the NAP assessments. The Governing Board also brought about the introduction of achievement levels. The board decided what students should know and be able to do while scale anchoring reported students' knowledge at various anchor points on the NAP assessments. They were first, these achievement levels were first introduced in 1990, and I'll share more about those shortly. In 2001, when No Child Left Behind Act was enacted, states were required to participate in NAP mathematics and readings in grades four and eight to informally, informally monitor progress on this national yardstick of student performance. As an interesting aside, the state of Virginia's performance on the grade four NAP in 1994 was cited as the Virginia, was cited by the Virginia Board of Education as an impetus for the SOL testing program. Even so, there are fundamental differences between the NAP and Virginia's SOL assessments. The first way the two assessments are different has to do with the purpose and format of the tests. The NAP is designed to measure content frameworks developed by the National Assessment Governing Board, and the SOLs were designed to measure student progress on standards specific to Virginia. In an NCS FAQ about the NAP, the NCS states that it is important to note that the term proficiency used in relation to performance on state tests does not have the same meaning as the term proficient on the NAP achievement levels, because the criteria used to determine proficiency are different. The National Center for Education Statistics NAP website also indicates that the NAP proficient achievement level does not represent grade level proficiency, but the proficient level on the SOLs is intended to measure grade level proficiency. The NAP is a low-stakes test in that no consequences for students, schools, or states are tied to the results. The SOLs are considered high-stakes assessments because they're used to award verified credits to students in form accreditation ratings and are used to identify schools in need of academic review. This distinction matters because of the potential impact on student motivation to do well on the This distinction matters because of the potential impact on student motivation to do well on the assessment. The NAP assessment includes a mix of selected response. By that I mean multiple choice, constructed response, I think short written responses, and scenario-based items, while the SOLs are primarily selected response items with technology-enhanced items. The two assessments also differ in terms of when students participate in the assessments and who participates in the assessment. The NAP is administered during a testing window that falls between January and March. SOLs are administered at the end of a given course or at the end of a school year. For the NAP, a nationally representative sample of students is identified by identifying a sample of schools whose students reflect the varying demographics of a specific specific jurisdiction. Within each selected school and grade to be assessed, students are chosen at random to participate in NAP. For assessment reporting results for states, the sample includes approximately three thousand students from approximately one hundred schools in each state. Each student participating in the NAP takes only a small section of the assessment. For the SOLs, all students in the identified grades and courses are to participate in the assessments, and individual scores are produced for students. While the two assessment types differ in substantial ways, the SOLs and NAP results can help educators and policymakers develop a comprehensive picture of student performance. The NAP accomplishes this by evaluating trends in achievement over time by demographic groups for the nation, state, and some urban districts. The SOLs evaluate performance on state standards and, as previously mentioned, factor into state accreditation, federal accountability, and the awarding of verified credits for students. The SOL passing rates are reported annually on the Virginia School Quality Profiles, and more detailed reports of student performance are available for families and schools to aid decision-making at the local and state level. In contrast, the NAP is forbidden to report individual school results, to influence curriculum, and to be used for high-stakes purposes. Over the next several slides are charts that show the proficiency rates on the NAP for the nation's public schools and the state of Virginia for each of the years the NAP data were available. These are the NAP results for the grade four reading assessment from nineteen ninety-two through two thousand and twenty-two. You can see the different performance that occurred in nineteen ninety-four and served as an impetus for reform in the state. From two thousand and three through two thousand and thirteen, the state of Virginia evidenced more of a positive trend upward than the nation, and then leveled off through two thousand and seventeen before evidencing a decline in two thousand and nineteen and again in two thousand and twenty-two, post-pandemic. The state of Virginia performance on the NAP grade eight reading assessment was initially higher than the nation in the early years. And then by two thousand and nine, while still above the nation, was very similar to the pattern observed across the nation. In the area of mathematics at grade four, you can see that the state's performance on the NAP in the early years was very similar to performance at the national level. But then from two thousand and nine forward, the state was making more gains at a faster rate through two thousand and seventeen, was still well above the nation in two thousand and nineteen, and then evidenced a sharp decline following the pandemic. For the grade eight NAP math test, both the state and nation evidenced a positive upward trend over time, with Virginia performing at a higher level than the nation for most of the years examined and with a notable decline from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two following the pandemic. I think I would be remiss if I failed to mention that there are caveats and criticisms associated with the NAP achievement levels as defined by the National Assessment Governing Board. If you visit the NAP site, you'll see the following caveat that I have on the slide. In short, the authorizing legislation for the NAP requires that the achievement levels be used on a trial basis until they are determined to be reasonable, valid, and informative to the public. As of the latest evaluation of the achievement levels in two thousand and sixteen, it was concluded that further evidence should be gathered to make this determination, and the trial status of the NAP achievement levels have been maintained. The trial status of the achievement levels on the NAP is less of an issue when comparing apples to apples, as I did on the prior slides. Comparing proficiency rates on the same assessment does show trends and patterns worth examining. It is less defensible to compare proficiency rates from the NAP to proficiency rates on the state's SOL assessments, given the differences that were outlined earlier in the presentation. Despite this, there have been third-party entities who have developed a measure termed the honesty gap. This measure is not produced or promoted by NCS or the National Assessment Governing Board. The honesty gap is calculated by comparing the percentage of students proficient on, let's say, grade four reading NAP with the percent proficient on a state's grade four reading assessment. The honesty gap was referenced in both of the reports provided by the Virginia Department of Education, even though the two entities most closely associated with its use have either ceased or paused reporting it. It was last reported by the Collaborative for Student Success on their honesty gap website for data from ten years ago. Achieve Incorporated last reported the honesty gap for two thousand and seventeen. In two thousand and twelve, a panel of experts were convened by NCS to review the NAP and make recommendations for improving the assessment. And one of the recommendations was to place less emphasis on the achievement levels and focus more on the average scale scores. In fact, when you visit the NAP Data Explorer tool that is available online, it defaults to reporting scale scores. If you have not already reviewed it, you may want to review the most recent report from the Virginia Department of Education as it makes many recommendations for promoting excellence and higher student achievement in the state. I've highlighted just a few of the recommendations from the report, specifically those most closely associated with references to the state's NAP performance and recommended changes to the state's standards and assessments. One of the recommendations involves conducting a benchmarking study that compares the definition of proficiency across all states in the nation to inform the state's proficiency definitions and, more specifically, cut scores on the SOLs. The report also calls for holding the Department of Education accountable for eliminating the honesty gap by benchmarking SOL results of new assessments and cut scores to NAP assessments that are administered thereafter. Another recommendation is to model revisions to the upcoming reading and math standards of learning off best-in-class standards as analyzed by a third-party academic organization with a priority on increasing the rigor of content in both subjects. The state has also convened a work group to revise the Standards of Learning Summit of Assessments. Members of the committee represent the Virginia Department of Education, the State Board of Education, several third-party entities, including the Fordham Institute, the VSB, the Virginia PTA, the National Center on Educational Outcomes, the Aurora Institute, as well as a couple superintendents, a teacher, and directors of testing from two Virginia school divisions, including our own Tracy Algada. The work of that committee is expected to wrap up by this August and culminate in recommendations regarding potential proposed changes to Virginia's statewide assessments. We will work to keep you informed as recommendations are made and implemented at the state level. Dr. Robertson will now come and close out this presentation with some additional considerations and comments.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Baniki. I think we can all agree that we want our students to receive the best possible education available to them and want to see them achieve to highest standards. Our hope is that the focus of education in the state of Virginia remains on what our students know and are able to do. And Virginia Beach City Public Schools stands ready to meet any changes to how learning is measured. There are a number of entities that provide rankings of state education systems. There are four such here. U.S. News and World's World Report ranks Virginia number thirteen. School Ru ranks Virginia number ten. Wallet Hub ranks Virginia number seven, and Intelligent ranks Virginia number five. Who can blame people for wanting to answer the perennial question of, well, how are we doing as an education system? If you do a quick search, like we did for this presentation, you can find a range of rankings for education in the state of Virginia. Each of these entities use multiple data sources of information to calculate their rankings. It is also important, though, to dig a bit deeper into the data that are being used to make rankings. For example, performance on the SAT is included in a number of the state rankings. But states differ widely in their participation rate on this assessment. And there is a negative relationship between participation and performance on the SAT as illustrated on this next slide. So a couple of things about the slide. On the horizontal scale, the the axis, the bottom, that's the total SAT score. Eight hundred, nine hundred, a thousand, eleven hundred, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred. The vertical scale is the percent of students who are participating on the SAT. Ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent, all the way up to a hundred percent. And this data is from two thousand and twenty-two. And it displays the averaged combined score on the SAT, again, with the participation rate noted. States with relatively small percentages of students from the class of two thousand and twenty-two taking the SAT have higher SAT scores. So for example, if you can look at the horizontal scale at the very bottom, those little blue bars, the little blue dots, I'm sorry, they're close to thirteen hundred. Or if I had a pointer, I'd point and show it to you. That they're like four little dots in a row, close to leaning towards thirteen hundred. Wisconsin averaged twelve fifty-two. Two percent of their students in Wisconsin took the SAT. Two percent. Wyoming, twelve forty-four. Two percent of students in Wyoming took the SAT in two thousand and twenty-two. Kansas, twelve thirty-eight. Two percent of students in Kansas took the SAT in two thousand and twenty-two. Utah, twelve thirty-three. Two percent of students in Utah took the SAT in two thousand and twenty-two. Mississippi, twelve twenty-six. One percent of the students in Mississippi took the SAT in two thousand and twenty-two. Here's Virginia. In two thousand and twenty-two, approximately forty-eight percent of students in the class of two thousand and twenty-two in Virginia took the SAT, and the average combined score was eleven twenty-four. So as you look at this chart, come over here. Can't hear me on TV, but I'm live. Well, participation rate, every division in the higher had a higher participation rate than we did, had a lower scale score. Every single state. From our scale score, the only division that had a higher score, the closest one, was thirty-one percent. This was about twenty-seven percent. Here's your two percents down here.
Dr. Robertson, um they can't hear you on the, so yeah.
You guys missed some really exciting stuff. But basically, the wh- what I shared there was that for Virginia, where our score was, there is, there was no state that had a higher participation rate than us and a higher score. And the only, the closest one that had a similar participation or had a similar score, their participation rate was probably seventeen percent lower. So I say all this as a way of recognizing there isn't a single measure, there is not a single measure of educational quality that can or should be used to evaluate a school division or even a state, and that existing measures require more nuanced interpretations than may be initially apparent. That is why we share a variety of data with the school board and our public on an ongoing basis. That's why when we develop a strategic framework, part of that work involves identifying navigational markers that we track over time to examine progress in areas for continued growth. I have listed on this slide some of the key areas we measure and report out as a school division because these meas- these measures matter to us and we believe matter to our schools, our families, and our community. They include student performance on state uh standards of learning tests, reading proficiency, on-time graduation rates, college, career, and civic readiness, as well as measuring learning climate. Key sources for these data include our Compass to two thousand and twenty-five navigational markers, our Facts and Figures site on VBschools.com, as the, as well as the Virginia School Quality Profiles available for the Virginia Department of Education, which we link out to from several places on VBschools.com. In short, our performance data is visible to all stakeholders. We believe there's always room for improvement. So one of the items we are working on this summer is developing a language page off of VBschools.com to increase ease of access to stakeholders to find division data. All the sources I mentioned on the previous slide are currently available on VBschools.com, but they are spread across several pages, and it takes knowing where to look to find some of the information. We want to eliminate that. In addition, the state has made some additional data sources available that we would like to link off of our site for families. We will also be coming back to you later this fall with a report of performance on the SOLs, as is our custom. We will also be launching the Equity Data Dashboard this coming fall. To conclude this presentation, I thought this quote from Vince Lombardi, arguably the greatest coach of football history, perfectly summed up our commitment to using what we have, be it resources, data, time, to ensure that every student in Virginia Beach is achieving at his or her maximum potential in an engaging, inspiring, and challenging learning environment. The measure of who we are is what we do with what we have. At this point, Dr. Baniki and I are avail- will available to answer any questions.
Ms. Malnick?
Okay. So, so why is the NAP used at all? If for nothing else to say, maybe to, maybe even just to diminish public schools in general? Like, that's what I took from this. Like, it's, it's not a great, right? Is that what I took from you? That this is not a fair or valid test? It's, it's apples and oranges, right?
It would depend on what, um, depends on what you're trying to use it for, right? So when it started, I'm sorry, I'm going to try not to geek out about it because I had to do a lot of reading in preparation for this presentation. I felt like I wrote a dissertation on the NAP. But when it started, it really started from a place of wanting to know what can our, what do our students know and what are they able to do? And I think, this is just me, I think there was initially an intent or push towards more of a national curriculum and a national standards and a national approach, but it didn't take long before people were like, we're not doing that.
Right.
We, we're not going to all agree to a national set of standards. So I think that that system of testing was put in place prior to even more of the movement towards local rights, local education, you know what I mean?
Right.
There was, it was interesting, the, there, when they first developed the commission, the Education Commissioner. Part of his job descrip- him, part of his job description was to provide an update on the quality of education students are receiving, so they had to develop an assessment to do that. And that's where this started from.
But it's, but it's being used against school districts, right? Like, that's what they're using as a comparison, and that's what some of the 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 latest articles were using NAP as the indicator for how school divisions were doing. And to your point, Dr. Robertson, I mean, showing the SOL, I mean, the um SAT scores. That, again, that was something really relevant. Like, I didn't, I didn't realize that. You want to compare with other people. It's like comparing ourselves to another country when they only test students that they've pulled out and put into a certain track, right? They're not testing their entire population. So these countries that are ranked so significantly higher than the U.S., it's an apple and an orange comparison again because students in other countries are on a track.
Yeah, I think what Dr. Baniki clearly showed in this presentation is there are a lot. Data should be viewed with a, with an objective eye, that you really need to get into what the data is actually saying or indicating. And that's based upon who is tested, what are the conditions of testing, what, what is the assessment measuring? And is the use of the assessment based upon what it's measuring being portrayed accurately? And we all want to be able to say it unequivocally where we stand in Virginia Beach, where we stand in Virginia, i- in comparison to whether it's Virginia Beach, all the other divisions in the country or in Virginia, and compared to the other states. With states having their own standards of learning. With states having their own standards of learning, it's very difficult to do that. Because the assessments they take in Maryland or they take in North Carolina are similar in fashion to Virginia, but they're not exactly the same. So it'd be disingenuous to say we're better than Maryland and better than North Carolina based on assessments that are different. And that is a similar comparison to the NAEP proficiency, proficiency marker is differently defined than the SOL test.
Okay, and so to that point, how do we ever, how does any school division ever compare themselves to somebody else? Ever, in anything that we do? And so I'm just glad to know this information, especially the SOL data, because that's used also against us. And how about the PSATs? When we get that data back, do we, we test all tenth graders, ninth graders, tenth graders, all of them?
Ten and eleven, yeah.
So when we bring that data forward and we, and we get an average score, that's every single tenth grader and every single eleventh grader. And some school divisions don't do that, correct? Test everybody?
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, when I say we offer it to all ten and eleventh graders, we don't get a hundred percent participation rate, but we're in the eighties.
That's pretty high. Okay. This is interesting. Thank you.
Ms. Owens?
Okay, I have a couple, so you can cut me off and go to somebody else if we need to. With the NAEP, how are students selected in the individual schools to take it? I know you mentioned it was random.
Yeah.
Does that mean some numbers are pulled lottery style from the state? And someone comes to the school and shows up and says, hey, Johnny Doe is selected to take this test today. Bring him down.
Hi.
How is the random selection done?
It's based on demographics of a particular.
They randomly select schools.
Yeah. So they do randomly select schools, but the schools they select have to have a certain demographic so that they can reach all the different demographic pieces. For example, Kemp's Landing may not be selected because it's not representative of all the different demographic groups. So oftentimes, the same handful of schools get selected time after time because they have a wide array of varying demographics in their building. Those are random. The students are random. The school is provided with a list of students that will participate. And then the team from NAEP and the school go through IAPs and five oh fours and make sure they can accommodate everybody. And if they can't accommodate, they take the assessment as it is or the parent can refuse if they can't accommodate their accommodations.
That was going into my next question. Are parents notified about the NAEP in advance? Told that it is a non, a low-stakes test, so there's no penalty for not taking it? And then having an understanding that they can opt their child out from taking an additional test?
Okay, so they are provided that information that their child has been selected and when the test date is. And they are required to participate. And it's very uncommon for one of our students not to participate. If they, if a parent chooses not to, it has to go through VDOE as a refusal. And I, I don't think we've sent many, if any, over the years. The only students who would probably be approved to not participate are those that can't be accommodated by their, the accommodations in their IAP, therefore those refusals go. But most students participate unless they choose not to come to school that day. So it's different between a refusal and they were at, their parent chose to keep them home. I can't speak to that, but they, if they're selected, they participate.
Okay, and about how many students per school are randomly selected to do this?
I would say around thirty-ish, thirty. A middle school might be more like forty, not very many.
Okay, and then, sorry, this will be my last one and then I'll drop back down. When it's explained to students, I'm not sure what level of effort that you're going to get. But if you come and say, hey, Jessica, I brought a test for you today. It's not going to count towards your grade, it's not going to count towards graduation. It's not really going to count towards anything but to see how you're doing, but we're not going to tell you how you did when you finish it, nor is anybody else going to know. What is the emphasis here for not having kids do, see, 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 thanks, I'm done?
I can't really answer that question, but.
Standard.
Yeah.
Instead of just pulling that information from SOLs that we're already giving them, which I know, obviously, we didn't make it up and you guys didn't make it up. But I'm having a hard time understanding where the motivation is for students to take an additional test on top of their classroom test, their SOL test, their quarterly growth test and surprise extra test that doesn't count for anything.
They are, the schools are provided with language to help them understand what they're getting ready to do. And then the folks from NAEP are actually come in and administer the assessment.
Although I think they're shifting, in a few years, they're going to ask local, the local to pick up more of the, it's very expensive because they bring the NAEP people in to oversee and proctor the exams anyway.
Okay, I'll, I'll fall back and then I'll ask a couple more.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you. I kind of feel the same way as Ms. Owens. I, I'm just curious about the relevancy of NAEP at this point. And creating just further a cost, it sounds like, as well as, you know, the additional testing to the students. I'm a little conflicted when I'm looking at this presentation because, one, I see NAEP, which again, as Ms. Owens had said, you know, we're required to take this test, although we don't get to see the results, although, you know, we're not sure, you know, what the benefit is and how relevant it is. But then I've also heard complaints from teachers' parents, you know, staff, that, you know, we only teach to SOLs and that's also frustrating. And, and so, am I correct to assume that the VDOE is looking at all of this to present possible assessment changes? And how do we weigh in about our thoughts on this? Because, go ahead.
Well, they are. I mean, that's what the bulk of, I mean, it's lengthy, a lot of it is appendix, but that's what the bulk of this is. This is the first set of recommendations to come out. The group that Tracy's working on will have additional recommendations. What I don't know is, obviously, there's a pattern by which they get in front of their, they have their own board meetings and they open for comment. I don't know what that process looks like or when people can weigh in with, hey, you know, maybe pump the brake here or let's reexamine this. But I thought it was important to pull out those pieces for this presentation.
Well, and the reason I say that is because so often we have things that are just kind of trickled down to us from the state and from, you know, national requirements. And I personally would love to be more proactive in providing input from, you know, our division perspective on some of this. Because, you know, if we're going to have to implement all of this, then we also should have a voice in describing our concerns. So it'd be very interesting if we hear anything else about, you know, a public comment period or something. And I, to make sure that we on the board and the community are aware of that. Because, you know, I think that the concerns over the SOLs, and then I, quite honestly, I didn't even realize that NAEP had these requirements as well. So, so I think this was very informative and I would like to continue monitoring this and the changes. Thank you.
Well, and I think that, can we dive a little deeper into that? Because there are some very specific, you go back to the recommendations slide around benchmarking. I think to get a little bit more deeply into your question. So that first one and second one kind of interact with each other in the report. And so there's this kind of conversation that doesn't come out directly and say it, but what you get is the sense of what they want to do is they want to have this discussion about what's called the honesty gap, which I think is an unfair. I mean, an honesty gap directly implies you're lying to people, right? I mean, that's like what that means, like you're being dishonest. And when you look at the NAEP, and as it's been described here, proficiency, and they say it themselves several times in lots of different ways. Proficiency on the NAEP does not mean proficiency in terms of grade level reading. They say that, in fact, they actually say it's better to look at basic for grade level reading than it is to look at proficiency. And our proficiency is kind of the state determination. And you can argue with the state determination about our proficiency scores of grade level reading, okay? And so they're saying, well, if, if our proficiency rate is eighty percent and the NAEP proficiency rate is forty percent, then clearly that's an honesty gap, although they're not the same thing. And so, but what they're then saying in the report is, so consider making that go away by making our proficiency gap look more like the NAEP. And so what I'm worried about, to your point, in terms of advocacy and conversations that I think we ought to be having, is that there will be a decision, because it does say specifically revisit the cut scores. Is that they will try to put the cut scores to a place where you have a similar number of students passing proficient in Virginia as might be passing proficient on the NAEP in Virginia. Well, if that means going from eighty to forty percent, you're talking about cutting an awful lot of kids out of proficiency at the state level. And that has significant implications for accreditation, for federal accountability, and quite frankly, for graduation. When you start talking about, thinking about like eleventh grade reading scores and eighth grade scores and verified credits. And so I think those, these are very good conversations that we need to dive into and we should be having with our Department of Education. The NAEP has never, in my thirty years in Virginia, been used as an indicator of success in Virginia. It's never been discussed, there's never been a conversation about, we need to align our standards to the NAEP standards. And even in states, Lisa was talking about, even in states where they've aligned their standards to the NAEP standards, they don't actually see improvements in their NAEP scores, which is kind of an interesting phenomenon. But all of that said, if we want, if that's what we want, we have to know what's coming as a result of that. And then we're going to have to think about, so what does it mean when a school goes from, you know, eighty percent of its students being proficient in reading to forty percent of its students being proficient in reading overnight? Does that mean we've corrected an honesty gap and that, and that these students are somehow just less capable readers overnight? Or that we've just changed the benchmark?
Well, and that's part of my frustration. I think it's going to create additional confusion. And it's not, it's not accurate when it says that it's a low stakes test. If it's going to create a situation where we're now changing the way to be more honest, apparently. It's, so I, I think that it creates a bit of an issue, to be quite honest, and additional confusion.
Yeah, and I know there's another issue that concerns me is we'll have roughly five thousand eleventh graders take the English eleven SOL, for example. I know we're using two different grades levels, but we could have seventy-five kids take the grade eight NAEP. And those seventy-five kids are going to represent Virginia Beach City Public Schools. What happens to the other roughly five thousand eighth graders that weren't assessed? And as Ms. Legata mentioned, they, they look for representative schools for the division and that's the right thing to do. But they're excluding Old Nation School. They're excluding some of our highest performing schools every single year. And so the generalization they're making based on a small, extremely small sample. If you brought that sample and you were trying to get a dissertation, a doctorate, your dissertation chair would laugh you out of the room because it did not meet the threshold. So the issue is, yes, it's nice to have comparison year over year, but to generalize it to this level is, is challenging.
Well, and again, I think that's why we need to just make sure that we're part of the discussion when it comes down to this.
Now, that said, I also do think if we're talking about, you know, conversations that we can and should be having with the department, you know, we, there is a constant cycle of revision of standards. And if the desire is to ensure that we have rigorous standards, I think that that is a good conversation worth having. And I think there are ways, I don't love the non-sourced benchmarking of our standards in this document, which puts Virginia last without any indication of how that occurred. But I do think there are ways to look at our standards and have honest conversations about, hey, in other places where students seem to perform better on other assessments, what do their standards look like compared to ours? How are they constructed, what's included? And have good conversations around that. They're getting at a little bit of that with that third-party analysis of state standards from the Fordham Foundation. I would just encourage folks to be sure that they think the Fordham Foundation is a non-biased assessor of standards if they're going to have that conversation. But I do think it's a good conversation to have. Are our standards rigorous enough? And where should our, where should our cut scores be? But cut scores is always a problem. Cut scores has been a problem since the advent of standardized testing. I mean, Tracy could probably give you a dissertation-level conversation about how and why cut scores get set. And the kind of validity of how those cut scores hold up over time. I mean, you see it, we've seen it, and then we could show you the history graphically of changing cut scores over time on state tests in Virginia and what happens, right? So we get new standards, we get new cut scores, we see dips. Then we go back up and we get to a place where people think that we're somehow inflating proficiency because we've, we've figured out how to deal with the new standards. And then we redo the standards and we change cut scores and we see another dip. And then we do it again and then we do it again. And so it happens on a cycle. And those are all reasonable conversations to have, but then we wring our hands because we see a dip. And it's like, well, no, we knew that was coming. Like, we've talked with you all about the science standards, right? So we're brand-new science standards, very different constructed standards. The cut scores will be different, well, may or may not be different, but we anticipate a dip, right? So we anticipate a dip because what happens every time we see new standards, we see a dip. And so we, we just have to have honest conversations about what we're talking about and not, you know, try to just score points in conversations about our kids. You know, let's, let's talk honestly about, do we feel they're rigorous enough? And do we feel like they're, the proficiency ratings are appropriate? But, you know, let's not also compare apples and oranges and say they're not. That's, that's for us, at least for me, in terms of looking at purpose of assessments, one of the most important takeaways. It's really alarming to me that we would see in a second document coming out of the Department of Education, a conversation about the honesty gap, which again, even the organizations that brought it up stopped doing it a decade ago. And so why do we want to keep trying to portray Virginia's public schools as being dishonest with their communities? Because that's simply not true. We have been open in reporting, here's what our students are learning, here are the standards. Here's what the scores look like in our community, here are our challenges, here are our opportunities, here are our successes. And there's never been a sense of dishonesty in that or hiding anything from the public. And when you say things like honesty gap, it gives people the false impression that that's what's occurred. The other part that's alarming to me about the honesty gap, just from a division level perspective, is we have no idea how Virginia Beach performed on the NAEP. We know for a fact that we outperformed every other school division in the state on last year's assessments. But we get, we get these NAEP scores at the state level and we don't have any idea. I mean, I imagine we prop the average up, right? But we wouldn't know that and be able to talk about that. And so those are reasonable conversations that reasonable people should be having. But I just, we shouldn't, we shouldn't leap to conclusions and assumptions just based on data without being, as Dr. Robertson said, a little bit more, a little bit more observant around that data.
Ms. Martin?
Oh, I'm not shy and I'll speak candidly, is the Fordham Institute is one of the largest advocates for putting public tax dollars into private charters. It is not an unbiased study at all. But what I want to do is zoom in a little bit on everything we've covered today and talk about that February benchmark assessment that we do each year. Thinking about our, our teacher planning time, thinking about the school calendar. There's, there's not time built in here for a teacher to go back and say, my students were deficient somewhere in this benchmark assessment. I need to go back and figure out some remediation. So as we think about the calendar going forward, I would love to see another staff day added in mid to late March to evaluate what comes back from that February benchmark assessment. And so they have time to plan in some remediation, curriculum exercises for their students before they take those late spring SOLs. I really think pulling all this together right here is looking at, what does this mean in our day-to-day operations? And I think it means we need time to evaluate the testing we're doing and add in some time for some planning for some remediation where it's needed. Thank you.
And I think, Ms. Martin, this might be helpful. Several years ago, we created a process called the School Support Process. In fact, that process was recognized by In fact, that process was recognized by AESA in two thousand eighteen as one of the top twenty-five innovative programs in the entire country. And as part of that process, schools hold data meetings. And in that data meeting is the principal and their team, the Department of School Leadership, Department of Teaching and Learning, OPEC, and anyone else, Tracy's team. And that entire meeting is 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 based upon recent assessment data, and then what are you gonna do about it? So, it used to be very data-rich, and now it's turned to not data-rich, because we we can assess that data outside of the meeting, and when we go into that meeting, we wanna know exactly, okay, what are you doing for your students who scored in this score band? What are you doing for the students that scored in this score score band? So that type of discovery is occurring as part of these meetings, and they occur strategically placed around when big benchmarks are done. Now, some schools have demonstrated their ability to lead on their own, so they only have two or three meetings a year. Some schools may have five or six meetings a year, based upon their needs. So that type of analysis and decision-making is done, and the most important thing is, the key players to support it are sitting at the table. So the principal does not have to speak to four different people to get what they need. They get what they need right there in that meeting in real time.
So are there, in terms of remediation, are there lesson plans that can be pushed out to like our P1s and P2s? This is their first time they're dealing with remediation, first time they're looking at this kind of data?
So there's, there's yes and. So one of the benefits of PLC meetings is work smarter, not harder. You you value everyone who comes into the room, and you share resources. Some, someone might be super strong in a particular content area, and they're the ones that are, that that will be leading that particular part of the discussion and creation of assessment. Another person might have an assessment created that's been really good, and everybody's vetted it, and they're gonna use this part. So that, that, that occurs as well.
Would there be a way where we could get a calendar of all the assessment dates? Because I'd like to overlay it with the instructional calendar, the holiday calendar, all of that stuff, to kind of really see how these things flow together?
Yes, we have that, and it's on the intranet every year, but, yeah, but we wanna, yeah, yes, we have it, it's developed. And I will tell you, the feedback we got from teachers last year, particularly elementary school teachers, early in the year, we we tested our elementary schools' students very often. The feedback resulted in Elementary Ditol under Dr. Kelly making some significant adjustments to when those assessments were gonna be given, to include some assessments aren't gonna be given.
Is that calendar shareable with parents, so they can plan appropriately? We're talking dentist appointments, doctor appointments, all that kind of stuff? I think that's good info for parents as well.
Yeah.
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 Start of the year, yeah.
Yeah, so the state testing calendar is also posted on VB Schools. It's probably not yet, but it will be by the end of the month. So that's for SOL, PSAT, those division-wide assessments. The local assessments that our Department of Teaching and Learning provide and teachers provide, they're large windows. So if a student was going to be out, there's, the windows are very large, so that they can accommodate students who have other things that they need to do. I don't know if that helps address your question.
Yeah, thank you.
So you do have a list of the assessments that are given in the window?
Yes.
Do you have it where you can share it with us?
Yes.
And we don't have to look it up to get it? We'd like to have a copy?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's, that's what I was hoping to get today, too. Thank you. Ms. Melnick?
This, this is the stuff that drives me mad, because to me, this is an injustice. An injustice makes me crazy. So, if an average person stumbles across this information, what their takeaway from the, from this information is, my goodness, what the heck are schools doing? And then people who are in the know get to discount this, because they understand what this means. But it's so often used against school districts, right? And so it's hard just to sit and listen. So, to Ms. Martin's point, kudos for you for saying it out loud, and if anybody's interested in exactly how and where this is going, do a little research on what's happening right now to Houston public schools. I'll leave that there.
Ms. Owens?
No, Ms. Martin covered my stuff, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Callen, real quick, he just raised his hand. Did, did you need to share some, something, Dr. Robertson?
I was just gonna share, really, the, the genesis for this presentation is this slide right here.
Exactly.
This is what we've decided in Virginia Beach City Public Schools matters. Now, if the community and the board determine there are other metrics that matter, that's what we're gonna measure. It just so happened that we fed this particular example of the NAEP in there, because it could impact that, what, what's there. If this, whatever the state decides, we're gonna abide by, and we're gonna, we're gonna do the best we can, we're gonna lead the state, because that's what we do, we don't know how to do anything else, but it would include, so we're kind of using this as, you know, and part of that is the NAEP. But this wasn't a presentation that disparers the NAEP, it just happened to be that the NAEP may end up driving some change.
Ms. Callen?
I've been at it six months and ten days. We've talked about a lot of interesting things and important things along the way, but I don't think there's anything more important in what we're doing as school board members and as what we're doing as a city relative to the education of our children than having robust conversations like this, seeking to understand and to hear differences of perspective on how are we really doing on the job of educating our kids. Nothing is more important than that. And if this gets controversial, it gets passionate, it gets even a little heated, that's okay, because I think every one of the people outside of this room, regardless of where they stand on any kind of political or philosophical spectrum, probably are all in agreement with the premise, when we send our kids to the public schools in Virginia Beach, we want them to get a really good education. And if there's something out there that says that's not happening, okay, maybe we can be a little cynical about it, but maybe at the same time, we should lean in and say, tell me more. Go ahead, poke at us a little bit, see if we hold up under close scrutiny, but let's do everything we can to make sure that the outcomes for the kids in this school system are really high. And I would say, just as a continuation of the thinking-out-loud process, bring in somebody that's a NAEP representative, since NAEP, as I understand it, is a subset of the Federal Department of Education. And if that's the case, then it's not some fly-by-night organization, it's grounded and it's since, it's an extension of the DOE in Washington. Maybe we have somebody come in from there and say, let me tell you our side of how we arrive at what we arrive at. Compare and contrast, and in light of that, let that shape and form and influence the way we direct the school system here in Virginia Beach. Because when all is said and done, we're all on the same page. We want our kids to get a great education and be ready for what awaits them when they leave here. So if this is one of those subjects that we seemingly might beat to death, that's a pretty good subject to beat to death. Bring it on. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
I actually very much agree, in the sense that we, if we have a concern, and it's pointed out through an assessment, I absolutely think that that is a valid way to bring it forward and to address the concern. I just wanna make sure that I understand, though, we can't understand what the evaluation results are for our division on the NAEP, is that correct?
Yes.
So there's no way for it to truly inform us
Right.
about ways that we are needing to find improvements or stuff? And then also, I guess my other concern with that is, you know, we, we have very high gifted numbers, which I'm not even gonna go down that road, but, but, you know, in terms of, you know, the fact that a lot of places don't have an all-donation school, and, and so when we're being compared to a division who doesn't have the programs, the academies, the things that we've got, and they're specifically addressing, you know, making sure that we're, we're using a, what, what, what was the term that was used? It's based on demographics. I don't know that that is an accurate representation of us as a division if they're only using demographics that is the national and not what Virginia Beach represents. So I guess those are my only concerns. I'm, I'm happy to get full transparency, however, I, however, I want it to be an accurate transparency, and not one that is grounded in something that doesn't represent Virginia Beach, if that makes sense.
It does. To Mr. Callen's point, we, we'll reach out to our NAEP contact and see if that person would be willing to come and speak to the board in a meeting, and then you guys can ask the NAEP representative all the questions you wanna ask, because you're exactly right. All of us wanna be proud of what we do. We also wanna be confident of what we're doing, and at this point, I'm confident in what we're, how we do on the state standardized tests that are based on the, the standards of learning in Virginia. I have no confidence in NAEP, only because I don't know how we did, I just don't know. So we'll, we'll reach out to our NAEP contact and invite him to come in, and then we'll, we'll put it into a workshop or something, and you guys can just ask questions away. And we, if the person can't travel, we can do it via Zoom. Yep.
Ms. Melnick?
Dr. Robertson? The other really important slide was the SAT slide. That, that was, that's really important to understand, that slide. Because we're also dinged a lot, even from some board members on our SAT scores, and so to, getting a real understanding of that slide is really important.
Well, and not full transparency, we know in Virginia Beach that our students are below the state in the SAT. There, we're close, but we're below the state, so I just wanna be sure we all understand that.
Are the same number of students taking it? So like, some are electing not to take it anymore, because colleges aren't asking for it anymore.
Our percentages of test takers is aligned to some of the divisions we compare to, and we're below them on performance.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. If my SAT scores are any indication of what I was going to do for the rest of my life?
Ms. Brown?
Okay, so, back to this SAT slide, and I do appreciate the visual, and thank you for putting this together. So would our top two percent of SAT takers fall somewhere where the other divisions and states that only had lower percentages of students taking them, would, would we be somewhere in that range with those students?
Well, we have all the SAT scores for all, we could, we could absolutely find that out, because we have all of our kid's scores.
And then that would, I think, you know, determine really, because it, it appears to me that only a very specific group of people in other states are taking the SATs, so.
Now, just so everybody knows, many colleges have gone away from requiring the SAT or the ACT for admissions, and that has impacted the number of kids who are preparing to take the assessment. When, when all of us were trying to get into college, it was a must-do. It is not anymore. And so that does affect the number of kids participating. However, that has nothing to do with how the kids score who participate, so. But Bobby, can we pull the highest two percent and report it back? Very good.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Now, I've forgotten. Now, actually, I haven't forgotten everything, but what, what I wanna know is, on the SATs, you said that, okay, this is just showing Virginia, this is not showing just Virginia Beach.
This is Virginia.
So what is the percentage of our students in Virginia Beach? Do you have that information that are, that do take the?
So this is the class of 2022, so these were seniors, and do we know our participation percentage of seniors?
Overall.
Yeah.
Something tells me I've been rejected.
So Bobby's a wealth of information.
I appreciate that. One, if we look at our top two percent, I'm fairly confident we'd be off the chart. Just gonna say that. Two, our percentage of any cohort taking the SAT does normally hover right around forty percent.
Okay.
There's been higher years where it's around sixty. It just depends on, honestly, year to year, and the trend for that, that cohort. But we can put that data together for you, in terms of percentage of total students who took the assessment for that given cohort, and report out top two percent.
Right, 'cause, 'cause that is misleading, 'cause, you know, if we did our top two percent, look where we'd be. So, being said, having said that, we also indicated that a lot of colleges are not requiring SATs or ACTs anymore. Do we know what the college is, just for the public to know, since we're on, you know, we're live here? What are colleges looking at? Are they looking at the rigor? Are they, you know, could you explain it just a little bit while we're on this subject?
Yes. So, one, I do wanna show, it is a growing number that's going to test optional, it is still not the majority that are test optional. In the state of Virginia, you have a lot of different options. When you look at what students are being measured on by our post-secondary institutions, rigor of coursework, there's the bare minimum coursework for admission, in terms of algebra two, chemistry, math analysis, statistics, whatever it may be, chemis, world language. And then from that, what level of rigor did you access within any given subject area? So did you take the most rigorous course possible in that subject area? How do your interests relate to what your chosen pathway is from a post-secondary standpoint? And how did you perform? So it is not just, yes, you took AP Calculus BC, it's that you took AP Calculus BC and you did well.
Okay.
So sometimes you don't need a test, that's what some of these schools are saying. To tell you that the student would do well, when I'm looking at dual enrollment, AP coursework, honors coursework, although limited in Virginia Beach, and they did well in those, no individual measure is gonna give me more data than your portfolio of work.
Right, okay. That, that, that is something that we need to push that information out to parents and students, especially our, our high school students. We need to push that information more, so, so that they're well aware of that. I mean, not that SATs are not important, because there are colleges that are, are looking at that now, but, but, but we, but even though, even though some colleges are still requiring SATs and ACTs, they still look at the rigor.
Correct.
That's one of the most important factors that they're looking at. And I just wanted to make that clear to everybody, because a lot of parents ask me, you know, well, you know, my child took the SATs and they made, you know, twelve hundred, whatever, you know? Great, but they only have a C average.
Correct.
And they only took, you know, they took honors classes, but they only made a C in the honors classes, or they only made a C in, you know, Advanced Calculus or whatever, so.
And Ms. Anderson, to your point, you mentioned getting the word out. We do have some workshops planned for the fall. This was, was likely come up tomorrow, it's part of the Scheduling Options presentation. And to Ms. Martin's point from earlier, well, thank you, referenced this, we're gonna talk about it with service learning, work-based learning, there's also industry credentials, which is part of what's considered when you look at the admissions process. So it's not just the AP dual and honors. If you're telling me that you're interested in cybersecurity, and you have the Cisco Networking Industry Credential, and you've taken AP Computer Science Principles, as well as AP Computer Science A, maybe you never got to AP Calculus BC, but you've taken the most rigorous coursework and achieved certain license or industry credentials on the, in that pathway. Again, I don't need an SAT score to tell me
Yes.
that you're ready to pursue post-secondary work in that area. So we have some workshops, and we'll share some resources that families can use on their own, or in conjunction with their school counselor, to talk about how those industry credentials, course requirements. course requirements, or course grades equate to transfer credits at a two- or a four-year school in the state of Virginia.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. So, we are now, um, finished our agenda. Uh, Dr. Spence, do you have any closing thoughts or anything? Would you like to add?
No, I think just a reminder that we begin same time again tomorrow morning, begin with breakfast again. And, uh, tomorrow, our lunch will be scratch cooking with our food truck, which will be fun. We'll have a little demo for you then. And, uh, we will close tomorrow's retreat with a recapture of what's been discussed today and then anything else that we need to capture for tomorrow as well as next steps. So, you know, I would encourage you to be thinking about that if we get to tomorrow, and I've captured with my team what we heard and what we think the next steps are. Are there other next steps that you'd like to make sure we follow on with? So, um, we'll, we'll have that conversation at the end of tomorrow's retreat. But great day. I just want to thank the staff for your hard work preparing for today and for tomorrow. We appreciate you.
Thank you.